Calling our meeting to order. We have a roll call.
Dr. Genovasi.
Here.
Mr. Kapadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Dr. Stilianu.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
Dr. Wilson. We have a quorum.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and the Times on January seventh, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, further reference, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and reviewing, viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrs.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking at the podium. This will assist us with your, our record keeping in the future. Please join me in a flag salute. I'd like first and second to approve the meeting minutes for May ninth, 2025, the regular meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, meeting minutes have been passed. I do not have a report after each. I'm going to table my comments for now. We are going to be talking about the referendum a little later, so I'll table my comments until then, but we do have some very special guests that I would like to get to the podium because I know that you all have a very busy day tomorrow, so I don't want to keep you here very, very late. I'm going to start with our Director of Athletics, Mr. Tripp Becker.
If I could have the members of the tennis team come on in and stand against the wall here. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Treese, family and friends. I am proud to recognize the 2024 and 2025 boys tennis team back-to-back state champions. Give them a round of applause. Both of their seasons were a showcase of talent, dedication, and teamwork, but what truly stands out is their character. These young men played with integrity, treated their opponents with respect, and supported each other every step of the way. They represented HVCHS with pride on and off the court. Their championship reflects not only athletic excellence, but the strong values we work to build in all our student athletes. I would like to thank them for setting such a positive example. I'd also like to recognize their leader, head coach Dave Burchill. Dave Burchill was named the 2024 Tennis Coach of the Year for the State of New Jersey. His guidance, mentorship, and commitment to character have shaped this team into more than just champions, they are role models. Please join me in congratulating the team and Coach Burchill on these tremendous achievements.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. It's a real pleasure to be here with this wonderful group of student athletes. As you know, we do emphasize several things, but our players are students first and athletes second. And all the lessons that they've learned on the court, I think are going to carry through for life. It's been a pleasure to coach them. I always tell my players, it's just wonderful and you should look around and appreciate the fact that the people standing up here with you now will probably be your friends for the rest of your lives. So I'm very proud of what is going on here at Hopewell with the support of my athletic director, Tripp Becker, the faculty, the administration, Principal Riley, they do a wonderful job supporting us. So the entire community can be proud of this team and this program. And the best news is, all but one of our players will be back next year. So we're going to try to work even harder, both on and off the court. So thank you very much, and it's a real pleasure to be here. I think, I think we have to pay Pat Riley royalties if I use that word three-peat, so we'll just call it a triple play.
Yep, alright, so we'd like to bring the players up in no particular order. One of our super freshmen is Amal Pareet. Amal. Amal is one of several players who had siblings who played for me, so there's a great tradition here. My next player is the only player, we're one of two that is graduating seniors, Zach White. Zach is going to Gettysburg College and he's one of our captains. Next player is one of our most outstanding juniors, he'll be back, another co-captain of the team. He and his partner both went to the state doubles tournament, and they are among the sixteen to thirty-two best teams in the state. His name is Kaido Mahan. Kaido's brother also played doubles for us, excellent player. Another one of our underclassmen who will be back next year is our sophomore, Luke Holcree. One of our players, I'm sure you all know, he participates in so much here at the school, and will be back as a captain next year, Manas Sinha. One of our other important seniors who was on the state champion last year, has been a two-time captain and is going to go next year to my, one of my wife's alma mater, Purdue University, is Home Charm. Alright, another player who will be a junior next year, but has been a varsity player for two years, an outstanding young man, another great student. His brother also played on the team, was a sectional champion, but this year it's Daniel Rizadi. Another one of our doubles players, his brother also played for me, but an outstanding teammate of Kaido is Andrew Pau. And the last player here is probably the most important player on our team. He was the number one player on the tennis team, and he was voted the most valuable player of the team. He had to play the most difficult opponent. When you were number one at Mercer County, and you play a schedule A guard, you play the most difficult opponent. And he played with a lot of character, hurry, and as I said, the team's most valuable player because he made everyone better. Everyone got to play an easier opponent because of this young man. So I'm very proud of Ishan Dose. So thank you very much, everyone. These are your high school two-time champions. It's a very rare achievement, and we're proud of our young men. Thank you.
We also have our plaques and certificates for our coaches, our coach assistant Gary Gall.
And I have to say a word about my assistant Gary. You know, many teams have their coaches, they're either their friends or their father figures. Here at Hopewell, we have two grandfather figures. That's what makes us so good. So Gary's one, I'm the other.
And again, we have our 2024 Tennis Coach of the Year, Dave Burchill.
We hope to be back next June to see all of you again.
We hope so as well. Congratulations to all of you, incredible accomplishment. We couldn't be prouder. Thank you and wish you luck for another season.
I also just want to add, if I can, out of my mics. It's all good. I, I played tennis for, for all four years of my time at the high school with, under the phenomenal leadership of Coach Burchill. All of the older siblings of these players, I played with them, so it's like, it's odd to see everyone, and, and you all are spectacular young student athletes, and I'm so proud to see the program under the leadership of Coach Burchill achieve this level of success. And the one thing I want to say about Coach B is, every year when we would finish our season and in that in-between period when we would come back for, for the next one, the first question Coach B would always ask us is, are you doing well in school? Because like he said, we were students first, and I know he stressed that discipline. He made us all stronger individuals, both as students, as athletes, and as people. And your legacy really does live on, not only with your former athletes, but all the folks you've got up there, so congratulations again.
Not only is Coach Burchill a great tennis coach, he's also a great baker, apparently. Brownies are insane.
We're up to brownies, yes. You're all invited to stop by for one.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take a picture and take a quick break. I'd like to introduce Ms. Riley. Do you have some special guests for us?
I do. I am incredibly excited to introduce our Youth Advisory Board. The Youth Advisory Board is a combination of students from both HVCHS and TMS who work collaboratively with their fearless leader, where did he go? Oh, there he is, Mr. Romanelli, to work with our local government on issues that are facing the youth in our community. They give up their lunch regularly to come to the conference room next to my office. They are incredibly productive, incredibly focused, and I'm excited to have them share a little bit more about everything that they've been doing. Thank you.
Step up to the microphone.
Alright, here we go again. So just to briefly introduce ourselves, my name is Manas Sinha. I am one of the vice chairman of the Youth Advisory Board. I'm currently a junior at CHS, and I joined the Youth Advisory Board this year.
Hello, my name is Gia Doshi. I'm currently a tenth grader at the high school, and I joined the Youth Advisory Board this year.
Hi, my name is Sienna Jane. I'm a sophomore at the high school, and I joined the Youth Advisory Board this year.
I'm Tessa Goodman. I'm an eleventh grader at the high school, and I also joined the Youth Advisory Board this year.
Thank you for providing us with this opportunity to let you know about the Youth Advisory Board, which aims to improve the community and the lives of Hopewell Valley's youth, and give our county's future the voice to advocate their concerns about their community and their visions for a better Hopewell Valley.
So some of the main responsibilities of the Youth Advisory Board include advising the township committee regarding issues of concern to youth in the community, providing service and leadership opportunities with the township committee. Thank you. The township department heads, schools, civic clubs, service organizations, as well as informing and educating other youth of issues facing the township and opportunities for youth involvement in city and community affairs.
The Youth Advisory Board hopes to foster community pride and make a lasting impact on Hopewell through advocating for youth voices. Last year, the Youth Advisory Board reconnected and gained several new members after a brief period of recession because of COVID-19. Last year, the Youth Advisory Board focused on revitalizing the integrity of the Mercer County Library, because it's a really important place and like a student hub and a community hub for people to study, relax, and volunteer.
So as you can see here, these are some of the damages that we noticed to the library, and when we saw that such an integral part of our community needed major renovations, we knew we had to do something about it. So our first thing we did was we advocated to the township committee with a presentation, and afterwards we met with, met with Commissioner McLaughlin, and through her advocacy, we were able to help fast-track the initiative to help fix the library. And as a direct result of that, recent renovations have started to the library, including roof restoration, which you may or may not have noticed.
Since we achieved our goals of last year, this year we shifted our focus to a more prevalent topic amongst Hopewell's youth. It all started when we conducted a Google form survey which Manas designed. Through this survey, we, we, it was revealed that sixty-six point three percent of students were suffering from excessive stress. We soon began to realize that this excessive stress was linked to a poor mental health.
In fact, the American Psychological Association claims that the long-term activation of the stress response system can disrupt almost all of your body's processes, putting you at an increased risk for a variety of physical and mental health problems, including anxiety and depression.
What we also noticed is that fifty-eight point one percent of students felt that their voices were not being heard. Um, feeling like, feeling like their voices were not being heard regarding the issues that they are facing in their community. Um, this can lead to the long-term stress response system and a feeling of hopelessness.
So once we identified these issues with the survey, we decided we wanted to create a solution that would not only engage students, but also engage staff, so that the solution we come forward with would be more strongly enforced within our school. And we wanted to create a solution that would both reduce stigmas around getting help for mental health, and we also wanted to increase awareness of the resources that are already at our disposal to receive mental health help because there are so many resources that students simply weren't aware of.
You might be wondering how this works. Well, first, Gia and I approached Ms. Riley, the high school principal, with a plan. Upon further discussion, we landed upon a monthly Google form that would be sent out by counselors to students and rate, rate their mental health. The counselors can then utilize this data to decide further courses of action.
The counselors also built upon our idea to create Google form QR codes to put on posters in bathrooms so that students who need immediate help can receive it. Along with this, in order to engage members of our school community, we decided to create posters promoting self-care and positive mental health to put around the hallways, and these are the posters that we created.
Moving forward, the Youth Advisory Board aims to keep mental health a major focus in our community and our schools. We want to spread awareness of our advisory board and of mental health by implementing social media, just gaining more insight to what students need and getting more insight into what we can do to help. We also want to advocate for Hopewell Valley Night Off, one, once every quarter, so four times a year, instead of just one or, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for listening, and we'll now open the floor to any questions any of you may have.
Yeah, I had a question. Great job. This is a fantastic body of work, and kudos to you guys for coming up tonight and presenting to this audience. So, right, you're in front of the Board of Education. If you could ask us for one thing as it relates to student mental health, what would it be?
I'll answer that. Um, so we are, like we said, we're in the process of creating our mental health checking system, so really just help in making sure next year, once we actually implement this, that it's implemented thoroughly within our high school, helping us make it accessible to all the students in the school, you know, allowing us to maybe send emails to students so that everyone has access to it, or allow us to put posters maybe in special places so that attract extra attention. That could be something of use to us. Like One Avenue, or one example of this is, I know that oftentimes in our high school, we're not allowed to put posters up in the bathrooms, but posters that would be in the bathroom, say in between like the mirrors, that would easily attract lots of attention, and that would make it easy for people to notice that there is a new mental health checking system that they can use if they do need help. So really just getting permission to do things like that next year would be vital to us, yes.
Have you thought about how you're going to evaluate this program in order to improve it? How would you do that?
I'll answer again. So we're, we're obviously still piloting this program, so I guess, well, the system would use a Google form, and within that we would put feedback as well. So based on the feedback we received from the form, we could do that, and also by assessing like students' mental health after the program has been implemented, by like assessing if actual positive changes have been made regarding student mental health. If positive changes have been made, then we will go forward with what we're doing, but if we see that the levels are the same that we've already noticed, then we know we'll have to reevaluate it and make some changes.
Since this is in collaboration with the counselors, I think it's also really important to note that they would really be the ones analyzing this data, and we would be altering the Google form depending on what data they need to receive, so we would definitely be doing all of this in collaboration with them.
I just want to say, this is a great job, and I, I really appreciate all of the data collection, because it's really important for us to be making decisions with some, some empirical numbers that we have here. A question I have is, on the Policy Committee and in the Community Relations Committee, we've been discussing over the last few weeks, the idea of potentially having board members give office hours directly to students. I think the slide that you have about close to half of the students that you surveyed feeling like their voices aren't heard is particularly alarming for me, and I, I know that feeling, and you know, there are other students in the crowd today, we've, we've had in the last few months, I would say some, some greater student engagement, whether it's around smart passes or, or the extracurricular fees that the board has added on, like there's a lot of, there's a lot more engagement from our community and, and our students, and that's really been great for us to see, we're very happy to hear that, but I think we as a board should also be taking an extra step to go to you. Is that appealing to you guys as, as a, as a Youth Advisory Committee, having us have these types of office hours, whether they be in-person or virtual, where students can stop in, talk about different needs and, and issues that they're feeling in their day-to-day experience in the schools?
Yeah, I do think that would be really beneficial because as a lot of students don't feel that their voices are heard, I think that collaboration, especially with people who are superior to us and in the school board, I think that would definitely be really beneficial to us because that would bridge the gap where we feel like we aren't being heard, or if we tell a teacher, they don't know what to do with that information.
Also, I want to add that I know a lot of you already have experience in similar projects where you collect data about like the district and you make changes based on that. I know Drew specifically, you've done stuff like that in the past. So really just like harping on the experiences you already have, and how, being able to have your supervision and leadership in helping us do that, you know, through like what you know works and what doesn't work, that would be amazing, yeah.
So first of all, big kudos for me. I'm impressed that you guys tackled probably one of the more challenging issues. I have people who are, who know this stuff better than me, they've asked the questions that I had. I will definitely second Drew's comment in wanting to see the data. I feel like we as a district spend a lot of resources on mental health, and you know, we're still seeing, obviously, that a lot of our students are struggling, so anything that you guys can do to help in that effort will be awesome. And, and the only thing I was going to add is, we did have students look at data that the district has and really provide valuable information to the board, the draw of decision-making, most recently, I would say last year, that where there is a real change that happened as a result of that. If you guys are interested in doing that, A P Stats, for those of you who are going into senior year, is both a course that will give you the tools to do that, but also probably find the probably find, um, the, kind of the teachers that can help you through that.
I just want to, um, thank Dr. Treese for inviting us here. You can see this is a very impressive group of students. Um, we have, um, a bunch of others, there, we're, we have a total of twelve, um, students, not all of them could be here, they're right in the middle of final exams, so, um, this is representative. I also wanted to thank, um, who, uh, David Chait is our liaison on the Township Committee. Um, he couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, he's traveling, um, for work, but he wanted, he, he did want to be here. Um, he actually really has helped us over the last couple of years, lining up guest speakers. Um, we've met with, um, county commissioners, a bunch of the department heads within the town. We met with the Mercer County Commissioner last year. Um, so he's really exposed the students to a lot of, um, what government is out there and how they have a voice and can make change. And that the change at the Mercer County Library is kind of the test of that. I also wanted to say, um, they identified this year as, as, uh, mental health as a big issue. Um, we're gonna probably, we'll, we'll have some new members next year, but we're probably gonna continue that next year. They're really enthusiastic about it and saw that it was a real issue, so you can look, look forward to that next year, so.
Thank you for your leadership.
Oh, and Manos here is a double, double duty tonight, isn't it? And the captain of the tennis team next year, so, man.
Well, I saw this impressive group present at the, um, Municipal Alliance, and I said, you have to come share what you're doing. I knew that they've been meeting all year, and our schedules always conflict, so I was happy to finally get to see you present, and I said, you have to share this with the board, it's amazing. Um, as Mr. Cabot has shared, we are going to be having office hours next year that we've already arranged with Ms. Riley. Um, we would love to, to hear, um, more of what students, um, are, are needing, um, to see that we're aligning our programs to what your needs are and your feedback on how we really, really could help. Um, and so I'm looking for plenty of opportunities to collaborate. And I would also suggest that you think about collaborating with the Hope Squad we just started this year, um, thanks to a community member that put us in, in touch with someone, um, that brought Hope Squad, and they could probably help also with some of the data collection that you need. But thank you for all of your work, and I, I congratulate you on, on your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Okay, we're going to move on, uh, the agenda to the referendum discussion.
Um, the board secretary, um, as you go through the presentation, I'll jump in as, as I need to. Um, but I, I'm just going to give a, a little, um, a preface saying that the Finance and Facility Committee have been working very closely, um, with, uh, Mr. Colavita and I to identify the, the most pressing projects that we are proposing to the board, um, for this, uh, proposed referendum vote for November. Um, we were charged with finding the most critical items that needed to be replaced, things that we were going to face a critical failure in our schools and perhaps close a school as a result of, of the failure. And so we pared down the list, um, we thought we were paring down the list, but as you can see with the cost inflation that's happened since our last referendum vote, um, the, the numbers haven't changed that much. We pulled some projects off that could not wait because we had failures, um, that happened at, at a time where we said we couldn't wait any longer, and then there were some emergent projects that ended up having to be added to the list. Um, we, uh, Bear Tavern folks, I know that you have asked us to look at a couple of things. Um, there's a playground that we're exploring, uh, alternative, uh, revenues to bring to you, and also we're exploring and got, have gotten quotes on a parking lot because we know that that's an issue for you as well. Um, I am working on that, uh, right now and to see if I can find an alternative to that. But our real mission was to find, to bring this, the cost down as much as possible and to really bring this question to the community with those, those items that are infrastructure first, and then the two additions that we're gonna talk about, um, Tollgate and Bear Tavern, to deal with the growing enrollment that we're facing here in the district. So with that being said, uh, Mr. Colavita, I'll pass it to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so just for the board and the public's, um, understanding tonight, uh, the board is, uh, finalizing, we're just be, discussing the final list of projects that will be submitted to our bond council for the creation of the question. Nothing we do tonight binds the board, um, until next month. Uh, actually, we, by the Aug- August twentieth, um, is the deadline to submit to the clerk. They do need time to get the, um, everything written up and, uh, in the, in the proper format for the county clerk. Um, but we felt that, uh, July is when we want to set this, uh, due to the timing of getting everything to the county clerk. So, tonight, the board will be deciding on what question, or what, the questions, the projects to be put forward, um, to be voted on finally in Jan- in July, uh, for submission to the council. Okay, so tonight, we'll be looking at those projects, our timeline, and the current cost summary, uh, based upon all of the different work we've been doing since, um, September, when, when the referendum unfortunately went down. So, uh, the first thing we were asked to look at by the board was what was removed from the initial, uh, referendum. So what has been removed is the ADA accessible restroom and concession building at the, uh, athletic complex at Central High School. It's been removed. Um, there is a primary HVAC replacement at Tollgate, um, that is being done, uh, this summer, uh, by district staff. Unfortunately, we won't be able to get, uh, the forty percent funding by the state on that project, but we couldn't wait any longer on that particular project, um, due to its, its current state of in operation. And the, uh, third project that was removed was the new synthetic fields at the, at, uh, AFT. So those three projects have been removed from the current referendum. Um, the board also asked us to look at what possibly could be added, uh, since the timing of the striking of the last referendum to its failure to now, um, some other things have, have risen to the surface. Um, so there's been some additional, um, HVAC work that was identified at Bear Tavern, um, some failures in some classrooms there, and the office areas, um, have, have failed since we struck this. We not, weren't anticipating that, but we placed those on. Um, some additional steam boiler work and a conversion from steam heat at Tollgate, which, um, if you're familiar with steam heat, once that steam gets going, it's very hard to control or to turn off. Um, converting that system to a hot water-based system, which is a lot more efficient and easier to control at Tollgate. Um, and then ren- additional renovations to Tollgate that was raised by their administration and staff to create a, um, more effective nurse area, um, with bathrooms, uh, an additional small group instructional room, and then a PE office, again, with a student bathroom there. The, um, the situation in the Bear, in the, in the, off, in the area there for PE and nurses' suite needed to be addressed, um, and we brought, brought that, that, uh, raised itself to the, to the forefront. Again, also in the costs, and we'll address those later on, um, is additional year or more that's passing between, um, getting these projects completed. So an additional year of escalation, um, had to be placed in this project. So, um, after a lot of deliberation, the board has decided to move to two questions. The first question, uh, which must pass, but the second question to be considered. The first question will consist of all of those things that are near failure, uh, and critical needs. Those include building integrity issues, root, the roofing replacements, the door replacements at, at many schools, the drainage issue with Stony Brook, um, and the front office, uh, the front entrance upgrade to both Bear Tavern and Timberlane. Again, the front entrance upgrades are not aesthetic, they are, uh, to deal with some safety issues on the grounds and the, uh, around those entrances. Again, critical systems, a, a lot of HVAC upgrades throughout every school in our, in our sending area, and then a sewer pump station renovation at Bear Tavern. Um, we, we are a, run a very small, what's called a very small water system at Bear Tavern. We are not on public city or public water, uh, sewer or water. We maintain our own sewer pumping station, and that, um, really needs to be renovated to, to modern standards. There is an interior door replacement, um, project going on at Bear Tavern and Hopewell Elementary School. Those doors are, um, they meet safety standards, they all lock for lockdowns and things like that. The real enhancements with that, uh, regard fire, uh, really fire prevention, um, and, and maintaining a secure fire, uh, door should that ever happen. Again, improved space for, for students. Uh, the auxiliary gym at, uh, Timberlane, many of you may have been there today for the, for the stepping up ceremony, but that is the last, uh, un-air-conditioned space in the district. Um, it is used frequently, daily by our students, um, both during the day and after school, and felt that space needed to be brought up to the modern standards as well. Again, some additional interior renovations at Bear Tavern and some toilet room renovations at Bear Tavern and Hopewell Elementary School in the, in the preschool kindergarten areas where, um, there are no, um, there are no ADA accessible bathrooms. There, there are bathrooms, but they do not meet, um, modern standards for ADA accessibility, and we need, um, we felt the need to do, to address that. Again, uh, some, a major paving, uh, issue under these, the whole, uh, the Hopewell solar lot, and a driveway improvement at the front loop at Tollgate. This isn't, not the side loop, we'll talk about that later in question two, but the driveway loop at Tollgate has been, um, on the list for many years to get done. We feel that is becoming, uh, a safety issue as well with, with the pavement cracking and the potholes that are there. Okay, so that's question one, um, addressing a lot of those critical infrastructure issues. Question two is space. Both at Bear Tavern and Tollgate, Bear Tavern, the additional nineteen thousand square feet is designed to address the incoming enrollments, um, in those, uh, developments around that, that Scotch Road area. Um, the Tollgate addition is to bring those, all of our students inside the buildings. Um, there is growth that we may be able to push towards, uh, Tollgate from the Stony Brook area. Um, Stony Brook is also receiving a great deal of students from the area behind Shopright and Federal City Road, um, but we are looking to expand there as well. Um, for a long time now, probably for the twenty-plus years that I've been in this district, we've tried to address, um, the removal of that modular building that has housed, um, our smallest, our tiniest students, our, our pre-K programs and our kindergarten programs, and it's just, it's time that we bring those students inside. It will also address, uh, the need for additional staff space at Tollgate and, uh, bathroom availability, uh, to both staff and, um, teachers. That will also include a parking expansion, but the parking expansion is part of it. Um, it also includes a recommendation from our local, uh, law enforcement and, uh, first responders that a roadway that circumvents the building, uh, be installed, and that would widen that area and allow our emergency vehicles to trans-, uh, to be able to, to tran- uh, transport around the building, which it can't. Okay, so those are the two questions, um, are, that are being proposed. We'll go further into detail on each question as we move forward. We'll go back to, to question one. About a nine-point-six million dollar renovation, you can see there in the, in the, uh, right-hand side of the slide, the areas of roofing that need to be addressed. This is where, you know, a full circle comes in. Those areas of roofing, um, then, the what we call the new gym, which is not really the newest gym, but it's the new gym is, is being referred to, and the PAC, um, were the, were built in the early two thousands, probably the two thousand referendum, um, and they are, believe it or not, close to twenty-five years old now, so that roof needs to be replaced. Again, that we mentioned the repaving of the solar lot, which is in the upper left-hand corner of that building, and, um, the four-hundred wing replacement, which is that kind of wing that shoots off at a diagonal in the far left corner of the building, that, uh, was built in nineteen ninety-five, and it's the original HVAC system in that, uh, area. Again, so we, it's not like these, uh, these, all these things have given, uh, their useful life to us in those. Again, there's not much being done at Ston- uh, at the high school, a lot of it was addressed back in two thousand fifteen with that referendum, the remainder of the roofing areas. So Timberlane, there is that front walkway that needs to be addressed. Um, it's hard to tell in those pictures, but when we did the tour last month, folks saw that there is a lot of areas for trip hazards and, and eroding concrete there, and that facade that you see in the upper right-hand corner of the slide, um, is starting to crumble as well, and we've removed, um, some of the brick already. The rest of it will probably come down over the summer by our own staff. But again, roofing needs to be done there. You can see the far, uh, lower right-hand corner of the slide, but that far left, um, that whole area of roofing needs to be addressed. The gym floral, we all mentioned the air conditioning, but also the replacement of the floor. Um, parts, parts of that floor have been replaced, but the, uh, damage from water leakage from, um, uh, HVAC units in the ceiling on there, um, pipes breaking and getting into the floor, and we've tried to do the best to replace that floor over the time, but right now, it, the entire floor needs to be replaced due to damage that has been, um, gone through there. And then a lot of HVAC work in that building. You know, one other thing at Timberlane that's being, uh, also addressed is the, is the secondary well pump, um, to avoid, uh, a well failure. There'll be a second well pump there, uh, they'll run, uh, lead lag where one will run for a while, and run the second one just to keep them both working, but we don't want to have a situation that we had, I guess, two years ago now, uh, where in the, uh, we lost the well pump and, and we're lucky to find a replacement motor, um, that took probably six, seven hours to replace. So we don't want that situation, we must have water, uh, to run school. And again, this is a situation where we run our own water there, there's no public water or sewer, um, we run our own well and sewer system at that location. Moving to Bear Tavern, um, again, um, there's some, some areas there, you can see in the upper right-hand corner is the deterioration of the, uh, the metal foundation there. Just over time, it, it, that area was, was done the best we could do with maintaining it. It was the moisture, excessive moisture that runs up against that area, as well as the rock salt for years of clearing snow and melting ice that, that caused that area to rust beyond, beyond repair at this point. Um, again, we've mentioned the sewer pumping station, a lot of HVAC work there and roof areas, you can see in the pod part of the building, the, uh, on the lower left, uh, lower part of that building is all that needs to be re-roofed. And again, adding additional bathrooms, uh, for staff. Moving on to Hopewell Elementary, um, this is a lot of HVAC work. Um, the interior doors here, again, is, is the priority, and we mentioned that the, uh, kindergarten restrooms to provide the equal ADA accessibility there, but a lot of HVAC work, uh, in the wings, you can see the arrows going to those red highlights, all need, um, updated air conditioning systems. Stony Brook, um, again, our newest building, our newest building is approaching twenty-five years old. Um, that main part of the roofing area all needs to be replaced. Um, we are going to add to this building a chiller. Um, you might recall that this building runs on a geothermal HVAC system. However, after twenty-plus years, the cooling ability of those wells, there are wells that there and they pull cold water out of the ground, and that water helps to cool and heat the building. For each, for heat, it works just fine right now, but for cooling, um, we are unable to in this environment of, of warming, the, the temperatures are, um, greater now than they were when that building was first built, and the, for the ability for that, uh, geothermal system to keep up with the excessive heat, both in the fall and in the spring, that we've experienced, and as well as the summer, we run a, um, our, uh, our E S Y program is, is very often run out of that program, that we needed to have a auxiliary system to help those hottest of days address that. So that's what's being done at Stony Brook. Tollgate, again, the vast majority of the roofing, uh, virtually the entire building is being addressed there with roofing, and then the third floor will be, will have some additional work being done, um, for HVAC work. Again, that driveway in the front loop as well will be addressed there. Okay, moving on, this is now, we're stepping away from question one, moving into question two. These are the additions, so there'll be a ten-classroom addition, um, that will be equipped for pre-K and K classrooms with bathrooms. Do they have to be used for pre-K and K? No, they can be used for anything, but given, um, you know, a lot of the needs that we see, um, we're bringing, as met, we're bringing in more and more, uh, preschool students in, both regular and special education, and we wanted to have the ability to put those students, um, where they best can be educated there. If we need them for other things, we can obviously use them for other things. If we need them for other things, we can obviously use them for other things, but it gives some additional space to that building with the growing population that we see there. There is the proposal for a second floor there. We don't believe we need that at this point in time, but there is going forward if we decide to do something in the future that we could easily add on a second floor there. And it gives you an idea of what we're looking to do at Bear Tavern. The area in red are the trailers, they were permanent trailers, housed up to eight classrooms going back probably 30 years before Stony Brook was built, those were regular ed classrooms. We have done a lot of work to those over the years, recided them, re-roofed them, re-airconditioned them, but given the day and age that we, they just, they aren't suitable anymore for full-size classrooms. They're smaller than what we would see inside the building, and with the way construction has changed over the past 25 to 30 years, they're just not effective anymore in what we're doing. We plan to maintain those, to keep those on as meeting rooms. There's always a need for meeting rooms in the district. Office space could be used, they could be used for office space, but they will not be used for students, hopefully if this passes. The area in green-
Quick question. Oh, sorry. By state regs, how long can we leave the preschool students in those trailers at Bear Tavern?
I defer to- Leave one more year. The area in blue and green is the area of the new, where the new addition would go. There'd be a breezeway near the top of that green area for the addition in the back. That green area will be an enclosed courtyard. It won't have access from the outside, but it will be a green space inside the building to be used for instruction if so desired, but that's where it'll be going. Basically, the blue classrooms are the full-size classrooms. The other areas are small group instructional areas. I believe the lower pink spot is the bathroom, and the upper space is, again, office areas.
And the reason I wanted to bring this up is because there's a devil in the details, and there's information about the square footage and the 10 classrooms and all of the expansion. The proposed expansion is more than just 10 classrooms. There's additional small instruction space, which, again, if you're talking about special education, preschool kits, that's going to be really valuable, and there is some additional space that we're going to be getting out of it. And then the other thing I think you may want to point out, the little dashed rectangle inside every single classroom is at the bathroom area.
Absolutely. Again, full-size ADA-compatible restroom facilities.
Also a question about a health initiative, right, in certain classrooms, all right, that there comes a specific requirement, and they're coming, the fourth round of housing capabilities to accommodate the affordable housing losses that they lost, and they're bringing even additional housing. So we're going to be exploring, doing another demographic study based on what they are proposing to come in, and also collaboration with King's Borough and Hope Borough, who also may be looking at the growth in their area as well, and they would be helping us fund that. But if we don't still be experiencing, there's definitely a place to put them, to bring our class size beyond what I'm talking about. I know the class size is going up just to manage our general budget, but if we don't have a place to put them, that's what you've got to make a policy.
So I just want to kind of, there are three very specific things that we kind of layered on top of the referendum. One is an additional requirement that is being studied, and I want to be clear that we anticipated that there might be a possibility of additional students above and beyond what was projected, and so the design provided initially was, had a potential for a second floor on Bear Tavern. This is separate and distinct from the referendum. I want to be clear. The second thing that was kind of layered in there were any agreements about this additional space or more money. I want to be clear, it does not affect the referendum as Mr. Colavita laid out. The point about potentially how long our kids can stay out in the trailer spaces in each of the properties, in the midst of planning, from a safety and security perspective, it was deemed critical for us to bring our students in, hence the design and plan that has been presented. During our year on the referendum, the state has come out with a mandate to move kids out of any of these exterior building slash trailers. So plans are already in progress, and so I want to, again, kind of carve out that conversation, although it does impact the timing of when we need to bring our kids in. The plan would be simplified by the passing of the referendum.
Because what will happen is, they say preschool needs to move out of the trailer. So what we'll end up doing if we don't have the space is moving other kids out there, moving the preschool in. If it's not safe for my preschoolers to be out there, I would argue, I don't want any of them out there, and that's something that I've been pushing for a long time, is getting away from these outside modules with the way the weather's getting and also with school security, kids need to be inside the building.
So please, I would encourage you, if you have questions around these items in particular, please, I encourage you to ask them at the podium. I think it's important that folks understand the compounded effect of these items and how they distinguish the referendum from other decisions.
Again, also on the second question is an additional or smaller addition to Tollgate, again, to alleviate that outside space where we have students, but also to provide some additional space that the other elementary schools do have that Tollgate has not for years. They do have a nurses' room, but it's not to the level of nurses' rooms at any of the other elementary schools there. Again, the big focus on this from our perspective was bringing those students that are in that outside space inside. You could see it there, that area, that dotted area of red is where those buildings are, and we look to bring those in. A similar addition, similar to what is being done at Bear Tavern, the breezeway from that back wing to an enclosed courtyard, as well as a new playground area or a new blacktop area, the students will not be short-changed on a blacktop, we'll be pushing that area back out onto that property.
So again, a quick comment from me on that one, because you mentioned parking, but back to the previous question. So I think it's pretty clear that when we, it's not that, I mean, Tollgate does need more parking, but that's not really what's driving the inclusion of the parking lot there. When we remove that building, something has to be there, right? You're not going to leave a hole in the dirt, right? So you're going to build something there. So that creates an opportunity to alleviate that parking situation, but we're not going out and kind of adding a parking lot as an extra project into Tollgate or anywhere else for that matter, right?
Correct. The parking lot is more of the parking line, so like a lane, it's just an extension of the widening of the driveway for emergency vehicles. And there you can see the additional spaces. The area two is where the nurses' suite would be going into, one, actually, one is in the front, the area number two is in the back where the new wing would be. So just the timeline where we are right now, discussing tonight where we are after all our discussions that led us through the fall and the winter. July 25th, with the board's approval, we would go for and submit to the county for approval. We are, another caveat that goes along with this is in the bottom down there, number four, we are waiting for what's called preliminary eligible cost letters from the Department of Education. We have not received those yet. We are in the, this is what the, it's called the haranguing process, where we call them daily and say, when do you think we might get those? Last year, I think they came 10 days prior to us needing to approve, but they did come. But we hope to get those sooner than later so that we can prepare the question. That becomes, after that, becomes the engagement with the community, coming out to local events, having forums, where board members and members of the public can engage in a dialogue as to what we're doing and why. There'll be many events at each school throughout, probably starting late in the summer and continuing through Election Day, but we hope to get out and engage with folks, voters, hear what they're saying, and for them to hear what we're trying to do to better the schools that your children are attending. And again, that critical date of November 4th this year for the vote. The cost summary, we've been able to separate the question into two parts. The first part would be about $58.4 million. The majority of those projects, in fact, all of those projects, we anticipate receiving state share, maximum 40%. Question number two, which are the additional pieces, the additions to both Bear Tavern and Tollgate, unfortunately, only 4% of those projects will receive state funding. Question one and two combined, $84,235, which is a few million down, 3 million down from where it was before. It's not significant, as Mr. Resnick said at the beginning of the meeting, but it is down. A lot of that was also caused by cost escalation that we expect to experience after our bidding process that this is going to go through. All totaled, 70% of the projects are eligible for state funding on that.
I know told you that most of the projects that the state, the state's government, the project office, they're still up, but when these states, they're not able to talk to them, they can't talk about those projects. So with more still, it turns to raise the tax rate, they were able to pass the budget, all the taxes are already paying, and we're seeing that on the table by that going through. So we still just start to plan against projects like this, just to have a larger number of programs, and we're not going to, some just plans to discuss this for a few years, they have us to talk with them, and they, you know, DC like 500 million, now we're all, it's close to 100 million, because of the projects we're out there, we were talking. So really accessing this market and head up the project, it's really a long process.
Okay, just one point on there too as well. It would be nice if the state gave us their share upfront. They don't. It's paid annually during the budget process. They do, it is subject to appropriations. I have not seen recently where debt service was denied a district, but they do make you put the money out upfront, and they pay their portion of debt service each year during the budget process.
Bob, you talked about, what is this like, for Bob, that's the whole thing?
Yeah, I got it. Yep, yep. So just so, we'll take it through. So question number one, if it was to pass, the impact to the local taxpayer, based on today's assessed values, would be 278 per household, 243 per household in Hopeboro and Pennington Borough, 288 per household. If we were to add question two, question two were to pass without pilot funds, okay, that would take the impact of 462, 403, and 479 respectively, okay? Again, based upon current terms and a 20-year bond. Going forward, if we were to get pilot funds for the $16 million project at Bear Tavern, it would drop the impact to 345, 302, and 358, so a savings of around $100, $100 plus change in each municipality if we were to get pilot funds from Hope County.
Do these numbers assume that we receive the 40% state share-
Yes.
-for the eligible cost?
Yes.
So that's already worked in through the-
It's already worked in.
Okay.
And regarding the amount that each household would be changed in their taxes, does it happen all at once, or because we're not bonding everything all at once, does it happen gradually?
This is annual. That number, that 345, 302, and 358 would change on an annual basis, based upon percent shares and how the tax enforcement is in each municipality. It'll be around that, but it won't, that won't be the number each year. It will change slightly in each municipality every year.
But if the, if we're not bonding all at once for all the projects, then does it immediately hit?
No, I mean, no. It was like, right, okay, okay, I see what you're saying, is if we only borrowed 30 million first, yeah, it would all be, it would all kick in eventually.
Right. And the reason I was asking that question is because a lot of times when we see a number as a community, we're expecting that change, and then something else will happen, and the assertion is it's another tax, when in truth it's the compounding effect of the bonding cycle and also the numbers that get adjusted by the county.
Now, depending on what the market does when we actually go to bond, if we got, if the rates were better than 4%, we bought it all at once. We wouldn't want to take a chance on it. I think the last time we did it, it was 30, 30-something million dollar bond, but the rates were really low. In fact, in the time since that bond, we have not been able to refinance it because the rates we have are already lower than to be able to refinance. And that's another thing that you can do, is if you do happen to strike a higher rate, you're obligated by state law to monitor and refinance when a savings achieves a certain percent, and our financial people monitor that, and we have refinanced over time. We haven't had to with the last referendum because the rate was so good when it dropped.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from-
Another question that came up, another question that came up from Pam earlier today was, as we move further into presentations to the public, we're going to give away if our folks can calculate the actual tax on their home instead of just the average home.
Yeah, I think that's really important, right? Because these are numbers that are being calculated based on the average annual household income, and we know there's a huge range, right?
Assess value.
Assess value, excuse me. Assess value, sorry. And we know there's a big range, so that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the impact on every single household, so.
One more comment I wanted to make. I was keeping notes early. All the way in the beginning, you said we removed some projects because we just had to do them, right? And then we added some projects because the board wanted to add them. That's a very soft way of putting it. I think we've always had a standard that you only, we're only going to put projects in there that really do need to be done, just new stuff comes up, right? And what, and obviously, even if we pass the referendum stuff, it's not going to stop coming up, but we have a huge backlog now that's going to fail. We can't clear it out of the budget. The idea is the referendum has, helps us clear the backlog and then assuming nothing really catastrophic happens, we should be able at least for a while, be able to kind of handle things out of there. But the projects that were added are not a one. They're the projects that our administration really believes need to be done. And in fact, Bob knows painfully that we, there were things that they advocated very strongly that we should do there and we, we've asked them to take out because we said, yes, they should really be, we should really get them done, but they're not must haves and so they don't belong. At least that's Finance and Facilities Committee. We didn't feel they belonged in this particular.
The measure, of course, was if this failed, would we need to, would we be able to keep the schools open, or would we need either close part or all of the school?
I mean, an example of that is what's going on at Bear Tavern right now. And we've, we've, we've lost the decent portion of air conditioning in both the office and in some instructional space there, and we've scrambled, and there's portable units in those rooms. They're not, they're not as efficient, they're not as effective, they're, they're noisier. But, you know, in this day and age, it's hard to say to folks that we're not going to have air conditioning for the rest of the year. It's become the accepted mean around here. Not when we went to school, perhaps we, we suffered through those last days of June, but now, you know, we have to find ways. And it's just not, it's not feasible to run portable units anymore in a classroom.
Well, the other example is in Tolgate. I know you kind of said, oh, we just need to build a normal nurses' office and, and a normal bathroom. The current staff bathroom, the one and only staff bathroom at this point, is on the other side of the building. And if that fails, and the Tolgate bathrooms have been failing at a fairly good clip, if that fails, the staff no longer has a bathroom. Yes? Yes. And the speech office, I believe, is a storage closet.
And something else I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up is, is there, there was a lot of clamoring in the fall for the district to use all of its capital reserve in, in funding the, at least parts of the referendum to reduce costs. The reason why we don't and why we use it so judiciously is next summer, we're already planning on repairing a sunken sewer line at Stony Brook. We would, we wanted to do it this summer, but we didn't have enough time to plan it, especially with ESY already scheduled for Stony Brook and the fact that Bear Tavern does not have appropriate air conditioning for that particular area to run ESY there. So we'll be taking money out to this capital reserve next year to fund that sewer repair. We have a water tank at Bear Tavern that needs to be replaced this summer. Capital Reserve will be funding that. So it's these types of projects, these emergent, more emergent projects that we have to address on a more last minute, I don't say last minute, but they're, as they come up, we've planned for them and we're going to use them. We need to have that reserve of money, or we're going to have to take it from instruction.
Well, I'll, I'll make a stronger statement, having now been, this is my third year in the Finance and Facilities Committee, and so I think I've kind of figured out a little bit what's what, right? What, this is my personal take, what Bob was really talking about is a very small savings account that has just enough in it to cover, you know, maybe two of these projects that we absolutely have to deal with ASAP. We can't wait for something like a referendum because a referendum always is several years, right? It would be, if, if Bob came to me and said, look, let's just, let's just drain the capital reserve, I would say that that is irresponsible. We need to be able to deal with at least one emergency, maybe two emergencies, especially given the history of the district having facilities emergencies at about that pace. So if Bob had come and said, yeah, let's just do what some people want and drain the capital reserve, I would say absolutely not, that is, that's irresponsible. So that would be a no for me if he wanted to do it.
Well, we wouldn't do that in our households, right? We have, we have savings for emergencies and we need to do that as a school district as well. We use Alphabet Soup a lot in school districts. He's been saying ESY, that's extended school year. Some of our special needs students need to go to school into the summer and get learning beyond the regular school year because they, they have learning loss that happens over the summer if they're out the whole summer. So you have kids in the building in the hottest months of the, of the, of the year, and we need to have air conditioning. And a lot of these students are medically fragile, so it's not an option to, like back in the day, not have air conditioning. It really isn't. We have medically fragile students in our buildings year round. We are a very inclusive district and those students are here with us. No, no, that's it, that's it. So at this point, I figure we open it up. Is there any more questions for the board?
Anything else? Is there a different way of, I'll get to Mr. Kapadia, but a different way of answering the question, is there anything that you've learned over the last few weeks that is important for the community to understand as you educated yourself?
So I, actually, that ties very perfectly into what I was going to say. I, so I've been talking about this referendum with neighbors and families, family friends and my own direct family members for the last two years now. I joined the board about a year and a half ago. I would say Finance and Facilities is definitely the part that I am least familiar with and least comfortable with. My dad, who is a real supporter of our district, voted yes on last year's referendum and plans to vote yes again on this year, gave me, I think, a really good analogy that I think is helpful for all of us to understand as we move forward with this referendum. I think if we think of our school district as a piece of technology, and it comes in two pieces, it's software and hardware. The software that we have is our operating budget that we have every year. It is some of the best software that we can have in the state, in the region, in terms of what we offer for accessibility, for the quality of education that we give our kids. And we have some aging hardware. And in order for us to meet the quality of our software, to continue to deliver the educational experience we want to give our students, we have to match it with improving our hardware. And that's really what this has been about. I think if we continue to avoid and fail to recognize the importance of our capital infrastructure, we're going to see issues in our ability to deliver a quality education to our students. We just talked about it. I mean, Bob showed the physical maps of the new classrooms that we're adding at Bear Tavern. If those are not approved, that's going to be larger classroom sizes for our kids. That's going to be straining our incredible staff who now have to deal, you know, with teaching 26 students instead of what we're normally accustomed to around 20. And, and it becomes, it's, 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 you know, we're asking not only our staff for a lot, but we're also asking for our students to then have to deal with those pressures. And so I think when, you know, it's just important to recognize that these two things, I think we, we try our best as a board when we're explaining our budget to separate capital expenses from operating expenses, and it makes sense. But for the sake of this referendum, I think we should remember that it's intertwined when we continue to avoid improving our hardware. It's, it's, we're going to have an issue where the quality of the educational services we're providing to our students is going to see in the medium and long term, some, some real damaging consequences. And I just think the analogy has stuck with me and, you know, I know a lot of, we're asking a lot of community members to process a lot of information and, you know, we, we on this board, this is like what we do in our free time, and I don't expect any of you to be doing this in your free time. So I think when you're talking to your neighbors, it's important to try and simplify things. And to me, that analogy has stuck in my head and I, I think it's, it's really potent for understanding the situation our, our board is in. We give some of the best education in our school, in our, in our state, and I think we've got to match it with our, with our capital infrastructure.
Thank you. That's a great analogy. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to our first. Our secretary is requesting we take a straw poll, so.
Just all those in favor moving ahead with this particular model, one, the question one, two model?
So we're, we're just taking a straw poll. We're not, this is not a vote. We don't vote until the next meeting. They're just trying to get a temperature gauge. Yeah, so it's okay, we're going to do public comment, but.
Sorry. Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Genovese. So if you had to vote today, those in favor of the two-question referendum approach? Anybody would oppose or abstain at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very well, thank you all. Now we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking at the podium. This will assist us with our record keeping. Public comment is now open.
And hi, I'm your friendly timer. You will see the yellow when 30 seconds is left and you will see red when your three minutes is up.
Hi, my name is Charlie Mott. I came here to thank Ms. Gullen, Mrs. Donardo, Belle Donardo and her boyfriend, and of course, Dr. Therese for coming to Special Olympics Summer Games, opening ceremonies at TC&amp;J. Please, please excuse me breathing. I love to see my teachers and board teachers support me, the other athletes and our coaches. I hope next year, all of Hopewell comes to see us. The first weekend of June for Summer Games is my favorite time of the year, even better than my birthday. It would be cool if our students volunteered, I would love that. The Scouts came out to help and a troop in Hopewell came out to help. It was awesome, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, Devon, Wydell Drive in Pennington. Mr. Kapadia, I want to thank you for sharing your opinions and views on U.S. immigration in your personal capacity and not as a member of the board in May. My question tonight is about a procedure or policy issue. When a board member identifies themselves as speaking in a personal capacity and not as a member of the board, what does that mean and how is that governed? Is that a special or privileged public comment time? Is that afforded only to board members? And does that board member have unlimited time to speak? Members of the public are limited to three minutes. Mr. Kapadia spoke for four minutes and 48 seconds. One minute and 48 seconds longer than a member of the public is permitted to speak by the rule of law. It seems inequitable, and so if you could clarify those rules and regulations or policies that apply to the board as members when they're speaking as a member of the public. Immigration and immigration policies are complex and difficult topics. My illiterate grandfather immigrated here by ship in 1899. At age 15, he arrived at Ellis Island. Abiding by the law of the land, he submitted to the rigorous vetting, medical testing, and requirement that he had a job before he was permitted to join his widowed mother who had immigrated six years earlier. It took him 15 years to become a citizen. The, the negative comment for people from Eastern Europe at that time was bohunk or hunky. As with all complex issues, there are diverse opinions and ideas that need to be heard, critiqued, and evaluated to generate policies that take seriously both the human dignity of the migrant and the rule of law, that takes civil authority and justice seriously. In his book, Just Immigration, Mark Amstead stated, "The rule of law is not an ancillary attribute of representative government, rather it is the moral foundation of legitimate governmental rule based on consent." When a significant portion of people disregard a law, this failure not only undermines a specific statute, that can also call into question the credibility of the government's ability to ensure compliance with the law. I would ask you to follow the law. We have an executive order, Governor Murphy gave us executive orders, over 300 of them. About eight of them regarded COVID. People lost jobs, they had to get vaccinated, children were masked unnecessarily. Please follow executive orders. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while. My name is Julie Cesari. I am at 26 Washington Crossing, Pennington Road. I have a soon-to-be second grader and a soon-to-be kindergartner at Bear Tavern Elementary. I'm here tonight to share with you the mission of the ECO PTO, which is to gather and act in service of you, which stands for youth and earth well-being. I am super proud to share that as of today, we have submitted our request for official recognition from the district as a PTO group. I'm super proud of the work that we've done this year. Our active membership has grown. And we want to really share our gratitude for the support that we have received from the district. Many of you have shared your time with us and bestowed upon us your experiences and wisdom and encouragement for our fledgling organization as we're navigating some very unfamiliar waters. So thank you, and we are all looking forward to collaborating with the district and everyone in the community to support you. Thank you.
Emil Backit, Hopeville Borough. So, I just have a couple of questions about what you guys have just gone over with the referendum. So, I understand why, obviously, in the last referendum, or the one last year and, of course, for this one now, you guys have split into two questions. I have a question about that, though. When you split into two questions, I noticed that for the second one to pass, the first one needs to have passed already. And my question with that is, I can see from the presentation that there are there are needs on that second question that must be met. For example, you guys are being advised by local fire departments that you got, that something needs to change to allow full access around Tollgate. And then, at Bear Tavern, there is need for students to get out of the trailers, I believe, in a year. And to limit your ability to do that, to have that very, especially because question two is cheaper and may be easier to get approved, I was just wondering why question one needs to get approved or question two to be approved. I had a second question, kind of related to that. I'm a junior here, and I don't think I've ever been in a classroom at any level that had a personal bathroom in it. And I was just curious why we're adding all of these rooms, we're adding sixteen total classrooms, why each one of them needs its own personal bathroom. My final thing quickly was, or relates to timelines for this. Obviously, a lot of this is stuff from both questions, that if it got approved, it's not, you know, snap of the fingers and it happens. And so, what are the timeframes expected for all of these different projects if and when they get approved? Thank you.
Hi, Matt Holner, four Old Washington Crossing Road, so, near Bear Tavern. I like the question on the bathrooms for the referendum itself. Similar question where one of the upgrades looks to be the fact that, yes, we're not on, public water, I guess would be called, right, public septic. So, then to say that we're in dire need to do things like, we live on septic as well, where we're worried about a septic pump cleaning out the septic system itself. So, I was curious why a decision would be to add a bathroom to every single room on top of something that already is in public utilities? And really, what benefit that adds, and if that's, I guess, a regulatory requirement with the fact that it's pre-K and K? I don't know the rules, I can't really keep up with how the government's handling anything anymore. I think from a presentation to the public, I'm always trying to follow along a little bit on why something passes or fails. So, I'm just trying to understand then, from this time around, were there any lessons learned? Any key parts of it that anyone through investigation found out why the referendum failed? Besides maybe some clever billboards around town? But I'd be curious to see, like, if there were certain points that really were the main holdup? If those are still in or out? Really, what was done or what's planned to be done to really lean in on those topics? To convince people to maybe vote yes, or the people that had voted no to change their mind? Because at this point, really, what you see is, I'm just paying more money. Without really maybe a clear reasoning of like, there's twenty-six kids in a classroom, or, you know, maybe higher, we're trying to educate kids who even maybe even understand the analogy where maybe in, you know, fifteen years from now, with a classroom that size, maybe they shouldn't be wasting their time learning technology. They might not be able to even comprehend it. Another question I had was really around the presentation to the public. I know that the plan is to really, once this gets approved, then you lean in on community buildup and support. I'm curious where the thought process is there, unless maybe I missed it along the feedback up here of like, hey, we're going to propose these questions. Where's the initial feedback of like, we added three items, we removed three items? This is what's being locked in? Because if you lock something in, in the timeline here of July, right, or July, August, once it's locked in, then you're just on a campaign of if you're not losing shift, or like, now you're just trying to convince everyone to go with that? Versus really getting the initial public feedback, well, I guess that's where we're here, but, you know, the room of how many people? We're just curious to see, like, what's normally the process there from this? Because I'm sort of new to this, I've come into kindergarten and another one following it up. So, that's where, for me, Bear Tavern is kind of the interesting state point. But I was just kind of curious of where those lessons learned came in? How to make sure, improve that communication, what information's there? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Heather Irishmott. I'm not breathing too heavy. I also would like to thank Ms. Donardo, Rosa. Unfortunately, we didn't get to see you, we're parking your car. I know it's crazy busy, you were probably with my husband parking your car. Bella and her boyfriend, and Ms. Gullen comes every year since Charlie was three years old, right? Three years old. I also want to take the time to thank Seth, who's here from Mercer Me, who Kate Hamm took the opportunity, she took advantage, she just rolled with it and reached out to Seth, and he reached out to all of us coaches. I ended up going to Hopewell Police Department, they did a tour for our athletes. I'm with Hamilton now, because Charlie, he plays baseball on Miracle League Baseball. So, now I'm a coach for Hamilton, and all his friends are there. So, he loved, he loved that. And he just, all of our athletes, when they see someone that they expect dad or other sisters, like, oh, hi, you know, they walk in, it's such an incredible event, as you both witnessed. But when they see someone that they did not expect when they saw you. And then, he found out you apparently, well, Charlie saw you in the stands waving your towel, you know, amongst all the people there. So, it was talked about all night in the dorms that we get to stay in all weekend. So, but he was telling his other athlete friends, and it's just such an enjoyable event. I really encourage you, I know it's a year away, to come to opening ceremonies. Jackie then comes to the events and watches. Charlie unfortunately had casting done on his foot, and he had his cast taken off two days before his event started. You can see he's in a brand-new brace that he had to get used to. But our, the oath is, I will win, but if I cannot win, I'll be brave in the attempt. So, that's what you are. And he got that in his head and did great all weekend. So, with a positive attitude. And I just think that everybody should try to make it, the fireworks that you all got to see. And thanks, Special Olympics for that. And you really should try. I also would like to put on the table that the prom be changed to another date, because two people got changed for a dance in a dorm one time. He is now, okay, he's now his age, and I got to push for it. So, thank you.
Can you hear me? My name is John Edwards, resident, Pennington Harbington Road. By way of background, which might be useful to you, I'm a proud father of two children in this district who have succeeded remarkably well since graduating, and that's an important part of why I'm here. I have a PhD in economic, actually, an undergraduate degree in economics and history from Princeton, and a PhD in economic history from Michigan State University. And I'm proud to tell you, not that it's relevant here, that I am the current world correspondence judge champ. It is my feeling that we all are part of a social contract when we move here. Whether our children in this district, and they receive a phenomenal education, or after they've graduated, we're still part of that social contract. The problem that we face right now, and it is a shocking problem, is, and it's not your fault at all, is that that social contract has been broken by what the Hopewell Township Committee has done with its pilots. The new residents who are coming in with kids are not paying directly into your coffers and assisting your budget, with the result that existing members of the community have to pay for those children. I have been going to township committee meetings for a very long time, and you go and you ask your question, you get an answer, perhaps, but you can't enter into a dialogue. So, here's how the dialogue plays out over months. They claim that they had a mandate for affordable housing, which is true. They didn't have a mandate for their pilots. Pilots are not mandated, that was an option. When forced to acknowledge that the pilots were not mandated, they indicated that they needed them for incentives to the developers. But there are lots of townships, West Winds is a perfect example, and they don't believe in pilots because of what they do to the schools. They say that they look forward to the township, every single dime the school district is entitled to. The truth is that the township committee is not required to forward a single dime of the new tax revenue to the district. And why is this important? And why do I oppose the sixteen-point-one-million-dollar fiasco that they're offering? And I want you to pay attention to this. It turns out that the three hundred, the recent pilot, which is being contested by both of the boroughs, the total, this is not a small amount of money, the word pilot indicates, oh, it's just some experimental thing. No, this is three hundred million dollars over thirty years. Three hundred million, and they're offering you sixteen-point-one million. All right, this is pennies on the dollar. If this had not been a pilot, you would have been getting about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy million dollars, and some of the issues that are being discussed here today wouldn't need to be discussed. You'd be flush with cash, as you should be, because of that social contract. I have much more to say, and my time is almost up. And I'll simply tell you that the sixteen-point-one million dollars is pennies on the dollar compared to what they ought to be paying you. And it's a political gimmick, because that lawsuit, whether or not it goes away, they owe you that, and they owe you, frankly, a lot more. I'll speak later.
Okay. Come on up.
I promise I will sign in, I just, I don't want to lose where my pen is, and so, if I leave my finger. All right, so, Brian Kavanaugh, and I live in Hopewell Township. First, I want to thank the district for supporting the Juneteenth Freedom Ride that happened this Saturday, both with the facilities at Hopewell Elementary and Tollgate. It was cold and it was wet, but those riders really appreciated the food and the bathrooms. So, I want to say thank you, Dr. Therese, for showing up. I don't know who was at Hopewell Elementary, but for all the Hopewell Valley members who came out, that was very appreciated. Regarding the referendum, I just want to say in Tollgate, I'm very grateful you're including the new and updated nurses' room. As somebody who knows firsthand the fact that there isn't a bathroom in that nurses' room, I know the logistics that we had to go through every year, including often having to close the nearest bathroom to the Tollgate cafeteria. So, I think that's really important, addition to that, to that question. Also, it's my understanding that the Tollgate PTO built an outdoor classroom behind the trailer. I see that the trailers are being removed, and I'm curious whether that outdoor classroom, if they have, if you have plans for that? And can we make that available during construction, if that's going to be a multi-year construction process? And finally, sorry for bouncing around, I know, I only have a few seconds. In her, in Jessica Nordell's book called The End of Bias, A Beginning, she sorts several studies done with police departments that showed the benefit of on-the-clock officers spending ten to fifteen minutes on mindfulness, as defined as time spent observing without critique. In doing so, it reduced the violent encounters and unlocked new creative solutions in their, the policing of those communities. Given the youth advisory board's focus for the next year, I was wondering if it'd be possible, if one to two minutes could maybe be taken from each class, which I think would give ten to twelve minutes across the, if accrued across the day, to give students an opportunity to be mindful and maybe help them in their mental health.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Charlie Mott, boss?
I know the board secretary was trying to research that as you were speaking. Oh, you do have an answer now? Okay, go ahead.
Public during, public comment, there is no specific, there's no limit in board policy under board authority.
And in terms, I know that you made a lot of other statements about policy and that sort of thing beyond the school. As a school district, we do have memorandum of agreements with the local police and federal and law enforcement. I must identify any warrants as being official warrants before I give them any information about any children, and that's my responsibility as the custodian of your children when they're not with you. So, that is the rule, period, so that is our job. And it is not the school's job to kind of know who's documented, who's documented or who's undocumented. It is against the law for me to solicit that information, but I am in compliance with any agencies that come here. But they need to come with a warrant, and there's a process. I'm not going to give any student information out until I determine that that information, I mean, it's a legally binding document. I would do that with any of our law enforcement, because that is my requirement. In terms of the ECO PTO, thank you for your proposal. You all went out and put that proposal together and took the three steps that an organization that wants to be considered a PTO with the school district must do. And I have asked Ms. Plitzis to put that on the Education Program Committee agenda to take a look at. I'm thinking that's the committee that needs to look at it, based on the work directly with students and curriculum and those sorts of things. And so, we're going to be inviting you to the meeting next month to share your proposal with the Board, and we look forward to hearing from you. In terms of, we had a question from one of our favorite students about the two questions. So, yes, the two questions are very important. What I don't want to happen, though, is we're building additions, and then I have to send kids home because something failed in the main building, right? So, the first question really, really are critical issues that if we don't fix, I may possibly have to close the school. I've already gotten close to having to close schools based on failures in those systems. So, those are like mission-critical. The other things we could live without is going to be crowded and tight and not fun. The other things we could live without is going to be crowded and tight and not fun. But I can't live without air conditioning, water, and all of those things. Bathrooms are required in all preschool and kindergarten classes now. I know that some of our older kids, even, we had to go down the hall and find a bathroom somewhere. It's now code that we have to have bathrooms in preschool and kindergarten classrooms. So rather than not have enough rooms that comply, it's better to put the bathroom, because a fifth grader can go into a classroom with a bathroom. A kindergartner cannot go into a room without a bathroom. So that's the reason why there has, we put it, we're putting the bathrooms in there to make sure that we're in compliance with the, with the lower grade. The timeline of these projects, we're hoping that to start some of these projects immediately in the spring. It's going to take some time to go to bid and to find contractors to do the work. And we're hoping by that summer, we can start some of the works on at least one of the additions. Mr. Colavidi, do you want to add anything else with that?
The additions will not happen next summer. The, the planning, the, the, the design of the actual building is very complex, and the timing will not allow us to get that approved. What we do hope for next summer is to tackle the vast majority of the roofing, the door replacements, and perhaps some of the HVAC work. But the additions will, the additions are minimum two years out.
Okay. And with the Tollgate, that gives us time to, which taps another person's question. I can't remember the gentleman off the top of my head. Mr. Colner, about, I've answered your question about the bathrooms. That the, someone asked about the playground. It will be moved, that was Mr. Kavanaugh. The playground, the, the outside learning area that the PTO paid for will be relocated based on where the PTO wants it moved to. And that will begin, will move that before we start eliminating the, the portable, the module buildings out there. So that will be relocated. Moving to Mr. Colner's questions, we have been on a listening tour all year, starting right after the failure of the first referendum. I've been visiting every school, every PTO meeting, listening to what folks didn't have a stomach for the last time. That's the reason why we removed the accessible bathroom slash concession stand from the existing turf field and the turf field that was recommended for the other area where the, the AFT field. And other than that, folks said loud and clear that they, they were full support of us fixing those critical infrastructure items. They also shared that the communication needed to improve. So we have had tours of the building at every board meeting. We've moved board meetings around the schools. We have tried to publish more information about what we're proposing. We've really tried to, to really, really get out the word. I've expanded my communications committee. But a lot of it was just really, to Mr. Edwards' point, frustration with the pilot. So I will say, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Edwards, about everything you're saying. However, we can't as a district impact any of that. Municipalities have that mechanism, it's a legal mechanism that they can use, these pilots here in the state of New Jersey. And we can't impact anything as far as they're deciding what to do in terms of going, to use a pilot to solicit a building, and whether or not they give us the funds that, that they get from those pilots. We can't impact that. What I am not in a position of doing is if someone's offering us money for something I have to do anyway, I can't sort of say, I'm not, I don't want that money, I want a larger number. If that's what they're offering me at this time, it would be irresponsible of me as a superintendent to tell the board not to take it and wait for, wait for the bird in the bush when I have something possibly in the hand. Right, so we are continuing to negotiate beyond that sixteen point one. But that's what we have right now as a promise. And they are working on seeing what other projects that they can maybe take off of, off of our list of other things that we have to do in this district. Because this is just some of the projects that we have to accomplish to get our buildings back where they need to be.
Let's see, what else am I missing? I think I hit on everything.
The mindfulness. Thank you, I know I was forgetting, it was over here. We have had a mindfulness initiative, initiative in the district for quite some time. Actually, the former superintendent brought it here. We do have mindfulness breaks and movement breaks all the way up through twelve. Are we better at it K through five, maybe six, seven than we are in the high school and, you know, yes. But we do have a campaign, all of our teachers have been trained in it. And we do dedicate specific days to wellness and mindfulness with our students. But yes, that's an opportunity that we need to expand for our kids.
Think we got them all?
One other note, there was a question about septic at Bear Tavern. We are not, we are not on a septic system at Bear Tavern. We have a sewer system that taps into the, the, the public sewer system that takes it down, a long way down to Jacobs Creek Road, but we, it's not a, it's not a septic system.
But I guess then, just because people are then going to be confused, even though it's not a septic system, they're holding tanks and things like that just because of the distance. And we are responsible for those things all the way to Jacobs Creek, right? So, so when you talk about tanks, those are not septic tanks, but there are still tanks on the ground that contain a lot of...
Last year, we did have a break in our sewer line that we had to repair.
Yeah.
Dr. Resnick, did you want to add anything else about?
Well, Dr. Trese said a lot of what I was going to say, but I wanted to address Mr. Baggett's question because I think that's a very good question, and Dr. Edwards made his comments, and I was, that kind of. So I'm going to steal Groves' analogy because I love it. My personal take and why I am supporting the two-question structure with the first one being required. We're talking about hardware. The first question deals with just keeping the hardware working, right? If, if that hardware breaks, then software doesn't run at all. It's, we also will hopefully get the forty percent match from the state, and I'd love to get it. And it's also a list of questions that you could, that I think most people should be able to look at and say, that stuff that just needs to be done is independent of the issues that are being caused by the pilot. Now, you could say we would have had more money, right? But it's independent. The second question, although I am supportive personally of the fact that we need it, there is a lot of, I do recognize there's a lot of anger in the community around the way pilot is being handled in Hopewell Township. I live in Pennington. I have my own choice words that are not for this meeting about that. But, you know, I also have to look at it as a board member and say, well, but we still have to go ahead, right? And so my only request to you on that one and to every community member is, don't direct your anger at people that have very little leverage over what, right? But because of that, right? That goes back to Mr. Baggett's question. That's why I'm like, okay, we got to pass the first question. That has to, that really has to pass. Otherwise, we are at a serious risk of having to close a good portion of the building because the list is so long, right? I can't tell you which one of those things will go wrong. But they're all fairly high likelihood, and the list is so long that by law of large numbers, something will break beyond our capability to deal with it out of the budget. The second question, as Dr. Trese said, it will change the way our district looks and feels to a significant extent if we can't get those spaces, but we will be able to continue functioning, right? And so that's why going in, and, and, and part of the two questions, I think, is also listening to the feedback from the community. That's why we split it, but that's why that first one is a must-have. I hope I gave you some personal perspective on that.
Go ahead.
I just want to address a couple of comments. First, to Ms. Mott and Charlie, I just want to say thank you for personally inviting us as board members to this, to the, to the Special Olympics. I'm sorry I couldn't attend. I, personally, my brother was getting married over the weekend, so I was a bit busy. But I appreciate you uplifting the event to us directly, and I hope to be there next year. And I'm glad that things went with, with a great success, it sounds like. And, and great job as well, Charlie, for your continued participation in that. To, to Mr. Colner, about lessons that we've learned, I think this is something me and John talk a lot about on the Community Relations Committee. I think we as a board oftentimes do point to some of the external factors that happened in last year's referendum. And I think it's also important for us to take accountability for us, you know, struggling a bit to meet voters where they were at in, in terms of communicating our case for the referendum. And we're, we're trying our best this year to really revamp in those fall months a more proactive outreach strategy, whether that's back-to-school nights, trying to be more present in the community ourselves as board members. Because I, I do think we, we came a bit short last year. So in terms of the lessons learned, I, I think that's one thing we're trying to actively push for. And then lastly, for, for Ms. Kosis, I just want to be clear. When I spoke last month, I, I specifically said I'm speaking in my personal capacity and not on behalf of the entire board. That's a, there's a distinction between that and speaking as a public commenter because the reality was is that I was sharing a personal story, and I was, there was definitely some political elements to what I was sharing. And I didn't want to assign those political elements to my fellow board members. So I wanted to draw that distinction. And I do also want to share my appreciation for you sharing your family story with, with the public today. And I also want to add the discrepancy in speaking time of three minutes. There have been plenty of times where we as board members, whether it be discussions around finances or the referendum, we have spoken well over that three-minute mark in, in our own personal capacities, talking about our own views towards the referendum or towards the budget. So, you know, it's, it is about consistency. We, we've done that before, but that's part of the role of being on the board is we have a little bit more leeway to speak during discussion and when things are passed. So I just want to give that insight and hopefully I answered your question a little bit there. But thank you all for all of your public comments.
Anything else from the board?
I just, for the record, I also appreciate the suggestion on having more student volunteers at the Special Olympics. So I want to make sure that we got that down in, in our written comments. I thought that was a great idea.
Wonderful. End of us. Okay. With that, we are going to go ahead and move on with the agenda. Public comment is now closed. I need a first and second to move the consent agenda items for approval.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Saying none, consent agenda items are passed. Does anybody have any old business items? Saying none. We're going to go ahead and move on to committee update, starting with finance and facilities.
Mark couldn't be here today, so he asked me to give the finance and facilities update. We do have two items that we're going to need to vote on. One is approval of athletic bus runs for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And I'll let Bob speak a little bit more on that. And the other one is a fairly routine one, but we do need to vote in it for acceptance of, of donation. As far as our report from the committee meeting, we just discussed the vast majority of it because the vast majority of it was spent on discussing the list of items for the upcoming referendum and, and kind of going through the details of that. The only other report that I have in mind is we did have the usual facilities report, which was, and we had one of those happier occasions where there were no new major issues to report and, and the ongoing, the various ongoing repairs that are going on are going fine or are going to plan. So that was the only news. And with that, Bob, do I need people, I need a first and a second for each one of those? Or do we do them together? All right, so I need a first and a second to approve the athletic runs for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six bus contracts and the acceptance of a donation. And again, once we make the motion, I'll let Bob fill in the details.
Okay, so Alex had asked me to, to, I guess there's been some, some talk in the community about our student athletes being taken to and from contests in coach buses. We did a bid, which we opened on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. We requested five hours minimum of buses. We got two bids. We got one from Stouts Four Seasons Company, and we got one bid from A-one Limo. The Stouts, A-one Limo, or Stouts cost was seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per bus. They would provide four buses in the fall, four buses in the winter, and two buses in the spring. That doesn't do it for us. They didn't actually meet the spec. We actually asked for more, we actually asked for more buses in the bid. A-one Limo, their price was seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents per bus. And they had a cheaper mileage adjustment, meaning if you went, if you go past a certain mileage, it was cheaper. There was eighty-eight dollars and forty-four cents compared to a hundred and forty-five dollars mileage adjustment for Stouts. A-one Limo was able to provide us with five buses in the fall, five buses in the winter, and eight buses in the spring is where we need them the most. So all in all, Stouts wasn't really compliant with what we asked for. And for the additional three dollars, we were able to get exactly what we needed from A-one Limo. Unfortunately, we got no other bids from any of the other bus companies in the area that may have used a standard yellow school bus.
So did we send the request for proposal out to all the?
It was advertised, and it was sent to all of the companies that we do business with.
So that, so what you're saying is these typical school bus companies didn't even bother bidding on this stuff?
They may not have the ability. So a lot of the company, years passed. This is the second year that we were able to have a bid. Years before that, we always had a bid for the period of time from COVID till last year. We were unable, nobody would bid on it. They didn't have the capacity, the driver capacity, the bus capacity to do it. We were, felt very fortunate last year to get a company to bid on it. The bid price is, is not different than, not much different than quoting it. But quoting it means you have to quote on a daily basis. And that is very stressful for the transportation department to not know on a given day whether or not they're going to, they're going to have a bus. A-one is required to provide us with those buses every day. They can't cancel, they've got to find a way to provide those buses. So again, unfortunately, they are coach buses. I think our kids liked them, but we, we didn't get, we didn't get school buses to bid, so.
Any other?
Questions on that?
Yeah.
And then the donation, I'm just going to read, is for one portable Yamaha, Yamaha portable grand piano.
Um, we do not need a roll call, so we can do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, donation is accepted, and the bus contract is also accepted. Moving on, anything else, Dr. Resnick?
Not on finance and facilities.
Okay.
Does that come next?
Um, no, we're going to go ahead and move on to personnel, and Ms. Smith will be giving us an update.
So I know Mark's not here, so I will be speaking for him. Can you hear me? Okay. So we met right before.
So we met right before this meeting, and we discussed the personnel appointments. We have new appointments for next school year. We have those staff who are going out on leave, all non-rep renewals, including transportation renewals. This is the season that we have to do that. You'll see a lot of summer work, so our kindergarten camp, ESY, our power professionals, and all the staff who will be working in those capacities. You'll also see the ECA appointments, because the MOA needed to be ratified this evening by the board. You'll see a lot of the positions for summer work pending ratification of the HVEA/CDAA, which is why the pages came out so many, so we apologize for that. Next month, you'll see them with the actual salaries. We discussed per diem rates. We had discussed that a few months ago in our personnel committee, and then you'll see them for the next school year. The employment contract for the cabinet. You'll see the contract for NJ Stride, which is the consortium group that we are a member of in New Jersey. And the MOA. Yep, the MOA for the HVEA, which we discussed in executive session. So that was pretty much it. Do they leave anything else? No, okay.
Okay, we need a motion, first and second, to move and pass or accept these personnel actions.
Motion. Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Mr. Slotman.
Aye.
Dr. Stilianno.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on to edcom, Dr. Resnick?
All right. So we had a shorter than usual meeting. So we, we looked at the summer reading list for the high school for fine books, nothing, nothing extraordinary to approve there. We had the STEAM, the elementary STEAM exploratory teachers, or rather, we had the overview of the STEAM exploratory program and discussion of what's gonna be happening to it. Unfortunately, the program is getting impacted by the cuts that we have to make, so we're gonna be going down from four teachers who are dedicated to STEAM exploratory too. So we kind of discussed some details about what the impact of those budget cuts are going to be. Dr. Pilitzes talked about curriculum writing. She worked with the teachers. They were able to do the curriculum writing during the course of the year. So we're gonna save some money this summer by not having to pay for curriculum writing. That is a kind of a one-off savings. It's unlikely that we'll be able to continue to do this, to do it this way next year or, or in the future. So we'll have to come back to that. We had, what I have to say is a very, very well thought out and extremely attractive sabbatical application from a teacher. Unfortunately, we're, I mean, sabbaticals are very rare anyway, and the committee felt that, given the financial position that we're in now, we're not really in a position to grant the sabbatical, even though that application was a very, very good one. And then we had a report from the teacher leaders. And just a reminder for, for the board, teacher leaders were brought in, or that position got developed, I think, two years ago, based on significant requests from the teachers across the district that they needed help with both aligning on how they teach things across, across subjects, across elementary schools, at the elementary level. So for consistency, teachers needed, teachers felt that they needed help with their professional development in adopting new techniques that are coming out and, and adapting ways to address the kind of the barrage of things that they had to learn. First with the pandemic, then with the AI, they really felt like they had a lot being thrown at them. So we developed the position of the teacher leaders. They came in. I think last year was kind of, the report was kind of, it's the first year we're getting, they were trying to figure out exactly where they fit in. This year, they came in with a very good structured report for all the work that they've done with, with the plan for next year. I think the committee was impressed. We talked about, you know, measuring the value that they bring and kind of being able to demonstrate the value that they're bringing. But I think to the three members on the committee, it was pretty, well, there were only two of us in attendance, but it was pretty clear, to me at least, that there is significant value that they're delivering to, to the teaching staff that's actually interacting with the kids. And that's about it? Questions? And there are no actions for us, I think, to vote on?
Not a question, just a comment. I had the opportunity to attend the teacher leader presentation, and it was just so impressive to me how these folks are, it's not really just about promoting consistency, right? I think what was so clear to me is that they are these hubs for best practice innovation within the district and sort of diffusion of innovation. And they are lifting up teachers who are really demonstrating skills exceptionally well and positioning them as peer leaders among other teachers within the district. And so to me, it was just so clear that what they're doing is bringing huge value in terms of getting evidence-based practice out there and really allowing teachers to learn from each other and then bring that back to their classrooms and their kids. So it was, it was fantastic presentation.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Moving on to community relations.
Hello.
Hello.
We met a couple weeks ago, and I think Drew was there, Dr. Teresa was there. Unfortunately, Jackie is not, so we'll make sure that is not the case moving forward, because obviously Jackie, Dr. Genovasi, I should say, brings many great observations to our committee. We met and candidly spent the preponderance of our discussion on the referendum. And a lot of, a lot of the many things that we've heard today, talking exactly about that. I know, this is my editorial comment, I know it's a community relations committee. I often feel it's the communications committee, because so much of what community relations does, I think, is related to communications. I'm wondering if that might be something we might consider as a name change at some point in the future, maybe communications and community relations or something like that. But so much of what we did discuss, obviously, was a referendum and all of the different ways that we're going to look to engage the community between now and the fall, starting now, obviously. And there'll be a whole different host of ways that we'll be doing that. Dr. Teresa set up a referendum communications committee, and I know some folks in this room, obviously, are serving as part of that, but I think we would be more than happy to have additional members of that committee as we meet. So anyone who has spoken is interested, you know, Dr. Teresa is certainly taking additional members of that committee. So, you know, please raise your hand if you're interested in, in learning more about that process. So that was, that was the bulk of the conversation, obviously, about that. And then, you know, we talked a little bit before about all the different events. I think that we'll all be participating in as we get closer to November, and that'll start, you know, very soon in the near future. And you'll be seeing many of us all around town. We did not talk about office hours, but we have in the past, and I strongly support that. And I thank you for bringing that up earlier. I mentioned headshots at some point, too. We should probably do that as well, or maybe just, you know, a team photo to put up there, so folks can, can put our names with their faces when they are out and about around town. So that is, like I said, bulk of what we discussed is obviously the referendum and ways that we can better communicate that with the public.
Question. So one of the comments that, that was shared during public comment is really about how we can sort of take the temperature of the community and sort of understand what are people talking about, be able to respond to it in real time, be able to ensure that we are creating, constituting a referendum that is acceptable to the community, meets the needs of the community. So can you speak a little bit more to this sort of, I forget exactly what we're calling them, but this extended group of community folks who are gonna really help us in communicating out the referendum and how they're bringing information back to us?
So we'll be meeting with them periodically for them sharing, and they've already been emailing me what's out, what's kind of out there and what, what kind of information that we need to, to correct. We've also equipped those members with talking points that they, they can have. I'm going to be emailing them now that we have our, our question almost finalized, saying these are, these are the answers to some of those questions that I know that you have reoccurring, in addition to asking them where, what capacity would they like to help with. We're posting things for us on social media. I know everyone doesn't follow my social media page, or if you do, you pay, may a little bit more attention to other, other sources. I can't post there, but some of our community relations people can. Attending community-based events and sharing that information at a table. And also, you know, giving me those things that I'm not, that I might be missing on those other social media streams that, that I'm not aware of. What really impacted some of the referendum that were around us that passed were those community members writing their own op-eds and putting their own opinions out there as well. So they'll be helping in all those capacities, I'm hoping, in addition to bringing friends. So if you have friends that are willing to help as well, we're gonna be looking for folks to join the campaign.
I just want to add to that point. We often don't get everyone from the community, those parents that, you know, that may, maybe don't have kids, or some of our seniors who also have kids that are out of the district already. So any folks that have ideas on reaching those individuals in the community, it's important for us to feel like people are contributing, getting their questions answered, and also feeling like they are fully engaged in the, as the social contract that we talk about.
I have a couple of thoughts. Actually, I sent a little message to Dr. Teresa, but I was wondering if it'd be possible to get students involved in, in the projection of these ideas. I was thinking about, I used to, used to be involved in what are called radio plays in Los Angeles. And we would, we would have these fanciful kinds of ideas played out. We could use students to do that. We could also have an art expedition of, in which kids showed their, their understanding of all the things that are, need to be changed in the, in the school. I mean, there's all sorts of kind of creative things in which we could get the kids, kids involved. And the more that we get the kids involved, the more they're gonna be talking about stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate it, your suggestions with the art. I didn't even consider that. We do have a group of students that have already taken this on by themselves. We technically can't kind of recruit students to do this, but they reached out to me and asked for the presentation, because they wanted to push the referendum themselves and also voting. Mr. Kapadia and I did go meet with all of our seniors, explained what we were going to be doing with the referendum. Again, we, we asking for their vote, just like we're asking for the rest of the community members, but also urging them to register to vote, period, right? I was very disappointed with the low numbers of students that we have that are registered to vote, especially since we make that available to students. So that's one of the things we're pushing them to, get involved at the, at the local level, get involved even when you're going away to college to mail in vote. I'm on my sons, I was on my sons about it, too. Really exercise the democratic process, not just the big elections, but the small ones, too. And the referendum is one of those things. But we have a group of students, the Honors Society of Social Studies, that have taken this on. That's one of the things that they want to do this year.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Moving on then to SEL.
Hi. So we had a, a great meeting. It kicked off with invited guests from our special education department, Dr. Beth Hoffman, Corinne Rutt, and George Needham, who run the different levels of our special ed. And Ms. Donardo gave them all a thank you, and so did the SEL committee. I want to add to that, that they have an amazing leader in Ms. Donardo, who doesn't always get, well, I, actually, I think get credit, but not the right amount for the level of support and advocacy that you give, not only to our special ed students, but to all of our students. So I just want to add to your thank you to them, our thank you to you for running an amazing program and department. With that being said, we talk about all of the amazing things you were doing. We were celebrating the first year of the Hope Squad coming together. We've got funding next year to pilot Character Strong, which is, for those of you who don't know, it's our SEL curriculum. But we've been piloting Tier One supports, which is basic supports that all students get. We've got money to do Tier Two interventions, so those students that need a little extra help, we'll be able to support them, which is amazing. We also talked about our restorative practices. We've got a parent university that's gonna be happening on learning about IEPs and for 504s. I also want to do a shout out. We had an amazing program by Jordan Toma. So thank you to the Shive PTO for introducing us to that speaker. I was able to attend a part of that, and the impact on our students was just amazing. All of our high school students got to hear him speak, and I was up in the top of, those of you who might know what the PAC is like, I kind of sat all the way up in the top so I could look down on the students. And it was amazing, the interactivity, the students like really paying attention. And you could just see them engaged and listening to that message, which was a really powerful message on resilience. And that school is challenging, you know, and it's challenging in so many ways for so many different students. And just his story of resilience. So that was just amazing. We also talked about our field days. All of our elementary schools have field days every year. And we in particular talked about Tollgate's model for that, and how they have the fifth graders lead their field day. So their fifth graders all year long plan the field day for the rest of the student, and then reflect on that sort of teamwork and collaboration. And we just thought it was a really great model that Tollgate has, and thinking about how we might be able to get that model to our other schools. And I think I hit everything. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Genovasi. Moving on to government relations. Mr. Kapadia?
Awesome. The government relations committee met on, I believe it was June 10. Yep, we met on June 10 to continue discussing our mission of expanding our relationship with local, county, and state government. I'm very excited to share a major update on our first ever FY26 budget request. At the end of May, Senator Shirley Turner submitted a budget resolution on behalf of Opal Valley Regional School District to appropriate $125,000 for an ADA accessible playground at Bear Tavern. The temporary budget resolution is number 526, if anyone wants to look into that. As a reminder, the current playground at Bear Tavern is not ADA compliant. It's wood fiber surfacing, lack of ground Moreover, the playground is slated to be removed as a result of the planned expansion to Bear Tavern. So for this reason, we have centered ADA compliance as the most important aspect of the new playground. This has been one of the Government Relations Committee's major projects over the last six months. It's taken months of outreach, meetings, and advocacy with our legislators, and I'm incredibly grateful to Senator Turner's office for submitting this resolution. I also want to thank Assemblyman Varelli and Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson's offices and their staff, who have been helpful to myself and the district as we've navigated this initiative. This is the first time in our district's history that we have submitted a line item budget request to the state legislature. So I'm just very grateful that our legislative delegation has been incredibly supportive of this endeavor. And I'm extremely grateful to Senator Turner for submitting this, not only on behalf of our board, but on behalf of the Bear Tavern community and to further accessibility in Hopewell. As a reminder, though, this is by no means a guarantee for the funding, but this is the most we can do as a board to get this included in the FY26 state budget. The legislature and governor must agree on the budget by June 30th, and there's some speculation that the budget will be fully approved by the end of next week. So we will hopefully have an answer by Thursday or Friday if we were able to receive this $125,000 allocation. In the meantime, for any interested community members, I'd be happy to share a template of an email thanking Senator Turner for her budget resolution and urging our assembly members to co-sponsor the budget resolution. This is a community effort, and I welcome any support. On the local government engagement front, we rescheduled a meeting with Mercer County Executive Dan Benson to discuss opportunities for cross-district collaboration aimed at combating segregation. As I've reiterated in previous meetings, Mercer County is one of the most segregated counties in the state of New Jersey along racial and socioeconomic lines, and it's especially worse in our public schools. So, you know, there's a whole host of negative effects it has on our students relating to development, socialization, and success after they graduate. So we want to be proactive in this conversation and see where the county executive will be willing to collaborate. The committee looks forward to meeting with County Executive Benson, I believe, on the first week of July. So next steps include following up with the LD15 legislators to co-sponsor our FY26 budget resolution, meeting with County Executive Benson to discuss school segregation in Mercer County, and lastly, hopefully, getting legal insight into establishing government relations as a standing committee.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question and comment. So, I mean, thank you so much for taking the lead on moving that resolution through. I think we're all so thrilled and so hopeful for that. I just wanted to make one small, I think, correction, because I did ask Bob this question before. My understanding is that the current playground is ADA compliant, so we are in compliance with the law. However, it's not ADA accessible, and so that's the challenge that we're facing right now.
Compliant, but not to the extent that it should be. And the play elements do not, they're not acceptable.
So to the letter, but...
No, but not to diminish anything that's been done, which is absolutely amazing. I just, that has legal implications, so I wanted to make sure that, yeah, we were clear.
So we're complying to the letter, maybe not to the district.
Perfect. Okay. Any other comments or questions to clarify? All right. Thank you, Mr. Kapadia. Moving on to policy. Dr. Lilston.
Okay, great. So the Policy Committee met on June 3rd, and we reviewed two policies and one regulation that are up for first reading tonight. So can I have a motion in a second to bring Policy 1140, Educational Equity Policy, and Policy and Regulation 9320, Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies, up for first reading? Okay, great. So first up, we have Policy 1140, which is our Educational Equity Policy. So this policy ensures that the district has educational equity policies in place in compliance with state law, and that we have an affirmative action officer and affirmative action team in place to ensure that we're implementing requirements in this area in accordance with state law, as well as a professional development training program for staff on educational equity issues. So this was last revised by the Board of Education in February 2017. So we have a couple small revisions to this policy that you'll see in the agenda. So the first is that we've removed the list of protected categories and have just cited back to the state code, which holds an expanded list of protected categories. And part of that is so that we don't have to constantly update this policy if the language in that state code changes. We've also made additional revisions to integrate minor updates from the updated administrative code and relocate information addressing our Comprehensive Equity Plan, CEP. We discussed that at the last meeting, into the policy guide that's specifically focused on that plan. You'll also notice that the title of the policy guide has changed. It's been updated to Educational Equity Policy from Affirmative Action Program. So I'll stop there and see if my policy colleagues have anything to add. Okay. Any questions or comments about this one?
Yeah, I have a question on this one. And the way I'm going to ask it is, I'm going to make a statement, and my question is, is that statement accurate or not? My statement is, if I were to summarize this, our policy says we're going to comply with all state directives in this subject area, period.
Correct.
So that's an accurate statement. We're not, right, state and local laws, regulations, directives from the Department of Education, et cetera. We're complying with the law.
Correct.
No more than that, no less than. Is that an accurate statement? Is that an accurate summary of what the policy says? No more than the law, no less than the law, just the law.
So currently, what we share with the state and local police department is information that, what are you talking about?
The equity policy.
Oh, the equity policy. Yeah, the equity policy is in compliance with the Jersey...
New Jersey state law. And the protected categories outlined per state code. Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I thought, I was on the other one. That's why I was like, what are you talking about? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions or comments about that one? Okay. So next up, and I think this is what Dr. Treese was referring to, we have Policy and Regulation 9320, which is our Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies. So this policy and regulation lay the groundwork for the school districts' cooperation with law enforcement agencies as it relates to issues around controlled substances, alcohol, firearms, and other weapons. It also lays out the regulations around law enforcement activities and operations on school grounds in accordance with our Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between education and law enforcement officials. So every year, all school districts in New Jersey are required to review, revise when appropriate, and adopt this MOA. This policy and regulation were last reviewed in 2022. So we've revised this to include a couple of new requirements from the MOA. So the first revision provides the superintendent or designee with the option to designate a law enforcement unit for the district. For our district, this is both Hopewell Township and Pennington Borough Police. Another revision to the regulation addresses Handle with Care Program. So the Handle with Care is a program which requires law enforcement officials to notify the district when a student enrolled in the district witnesses something traumatic outside of the school. So the revision states that the superintendent or the designee will designate a point of contact for each school building who's tasked with receiving these notifications, and in our district, I believe this is Ms. Smith, who then shares this information with school principals. One thing that we discussed in committee is that there is quite a great deal of confidentiality around these notifications, and even the school principals are not told necessarily the detail of incident, just that it occurred so they can kind of check in with that student and how they're doing. The last revision that we have here is that the policy and regulation have also been revised to include the language cannabis and other drugs, as marijuana and cannabis are no longer controlled dangerous substance, but still do trigger the district's responsibility to notify law enforcement if a student's found to be under the influence or in possession. So any questions or comments about that one? Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, great. So now we'll move on to second reading. So can I have a motion in a second to bring Policies 5512, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying, and Policy and Regulation 5111, Eligibility of Resident/Non-Resident Students, up for second reading?
Second.
Okay, great. So the committee did not receive any comments or revisions to these, the policies or regulation based on first reading. We did have a chance to discuss them in depth at that time, so I will just ask now if anybody has any comments, revisions, questions about these policies and this regulation at this time. Okay. So Bob, I think we're due a roll call vote?
Dr. Esnick.
Yep.
Mr. Slotman.
Aye.
Dr. Stilianno.
Not present.
Dr. Wilson.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovese.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Lilston.
Yes.
And Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries. So this policy, I'm going to just point out because it's important, it's a big shift in the way school districts used to do things. We have operated this district and most districts in New Jersey with a so-called senior privilege, meaning if you were a senior with us in November or early on in the school year and your family moved, the superintendent had the discretion to let that family, that student, that senior stay. We've also extended that to all the terminal grades, really, at a grade band, eighth grade and fifth grade. We allow those parents to, as long as they're willing to provide transportation, let the child finish the year. The New Jersey Department of Education no longer allows us to do that. Another thing that we used to do is if you had a house under contract, building a house locally, and the house was going to be open to you within the next couple of months, we would let your child start here. We would take a tuition check, but we wouldn't cash it, provided that you moved here within those 60 days or, you know, within the timeline. We can't do that anymore either. So you can't physically move into the district, then you have to pay tuition. So that is going to be a big shift in the way that we used to do things. Believe me, the superintendents are not happy with it, but that is what we have to do moving forward. So I'm going to really be pointing that out because a lot of folks are making decisions to move under the assumption that their kids can stay if it's their senior year or eighth grade or fifth grade, and we can no longer do that unless you're willing to pay tuition.
And I note, it needs to be noted, the reason for this, believe it or not, athletics.
Sorry, I wasn't going to ask a question, but now I have to, because this is puzzling.
Recruiting. What they'll say is, come here, we'll waive the tuition for a year, and you, you know, your student can play. Or finish out the season. Not what's in best interest of students who may be graduating in three months or two months.
As Mark, who is not present, points out, this is not the venue to complain about it, so I won't.
Great. Moving on then. All right, somebody's over here moving my agenda items as we're using them. All right, we're going to need a first and second to approve the agenda, I'm sorry, the board calendars for June and July.
Motion.
Second.
We start with the easy one. Personnel on July 21st at 6:00 p.m. Okay. Do we want to do finance at our traditional 8:00 a.m. Monday morning the week before, July 14th? We've got, sure we have vacations involved. All right. Okay. Mickey.
Government Relations, what do you think? That's policy.
So it's on the 7th at 12:00 p.m.?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I thought. Anyone have any new business? Okay, seeing...
Just another second reminder that petitions are due July 28th for the three open seats that we have on the board. The seats are two three-year terms for Hopewell Township and one three-year term for Hopewell Borough. Okay? So those, again, those petitions are due to the county clerk in Trenton by 4:00 p.m. on July 28th. Petitions can be secured online or in my office.
Okay. With that, we are now moving on to public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address the municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up, but if... The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public are reminded to, who intend to participate in the public comment are reminded to sign in prior to speaking, this will assist us with our record keeping. Public comment is now open.
Hi, I'm Heather Irish-Mott. First, I wanted to ask about the buses. It's always intriguing to me to know, uh, Calavito, Mr. Calavito? Who, what is the qualification for taking those buses? As I am getting my daughter ready to get on a yellow bus and try not drive an hour and a half to Downingtown for competition. So I thought maybe there's reasons. So I wanted to ask, Jackie, thank you so much for adding the volunteers or mentioning it. I spoke to, there's several counties that participate, and I spoke, when I, when I, we have to line our athletes up and get them in staging, there's about 12 volunteers just there. So I talked to them so that one of our athletes doesn't turn around and run or whatever. They're from like two hours away to three hours away. I found one that was close by, and I don't, I didn't speak to every volunteer, but there's so many people here and you can do like a day, it's not staying over, so it could be done. I'm just, honestly, I'm just tired of trying to email everybody, so I stopped this year. And thank you for mentioning Jordan Toma. For all of the elementary people, they'll never know, you know, so. Jordan Toma, I think the four of us were there. He wrote a book called I'm Just a Kid With an IEP. I suggest you read it because people who aren't really familiar with why special ed is that important. Had a tough life and he's having a grand life now. I'm Just a Kid With an IEP. You can get it on Amazon. You can also see him on Instagram, Instagram. I'm Just a Kid With an IEP on Instagram. He's great. Jordan Toma. I think the camp, I don't know if you were talking about the campers, Mr. Calavita, that are at, or somebody are at Bear Tavern, but I'm kind of hoping they aren't there anymore because my, my boys, 17-year-olds ago, were in those camper. So if they're that bad, I'm kind of hoping Charlie was in one too. But I don't know if they're still there, and they may have been staying Tolgate. The group of students who came, awesome. I know Tom Smith had started a great thing here. When your family with someone who has mental illness, it's tough. It's tough on everybody in your family, and I didn't want to talk about it when Charlie was here, but it's tough. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Kate Hamm. I would like to also publicly and personally thank Seth at Mercer Me for running a piece about some very special athletes, coaches, and volunteers in our area. As previously stated, Special Olympics holds a very special place in my heart. Our athletes love to see familiar faces over the course of the weekend, so we have already floated the idea to have the Unified Club and Best Buddies to register as volunteers throughout the weekend as they are able next year. I invite you all, board members and staff members, to do the same. Neighboring districts have found a way to support in-district Special Olympics programming. While I know the budget is tight at this time, I would ask you to keep a file in the back of your brain to consider a line item in the budget for a district-sponsored Special Olympics program. I too am eager to hear the trajectory of the work by the Youth Advisory Board as it pertains to mental health. As you may be aware, I've been a huge advocate supporting the mental health of our youth. If feasible, I would be grateful to participate in any discussion or collaboration with the District, Hope Squad, and the Youth Advisory Board. Tonight, I heard the District's presentation and the Board's support for a two-question voting mechanism for the proposed referendum. To utilize the analogy provided by Mr. Kapadia and described by Mr. Resnick, the first question is the hardware, the must-needs to function, and the second question is the software or the operating system. Well, that's what you said. Utilizing that analogy, what if Bear Tavern and Tolgate used a different operating system from that of Hopewell Elementary in Stony Brook? It has been tossed around in the public that those not directly impacted by the additions may not support a second question. By separating this question, are you pitting half of the Hopewell Valley community against the other? Was there ever true consideration for one question because we are one Hopewell Valley? It's evident the needs here in the district, it's evident the needs of the district, but fear exists specifically in the Bear Tavern and Tolgate communities that two questions may be using the analogy pitting an iOS system against an Android system.
I wanted to make sure to clarify, I'm not angry at this board, and I really do hope that the referendum passes, and my wife and I will be voting for it. But there has been, there was certainly a tremendous amount of disinformation the last time, and I witnessed it firsthand, seeing folks talking about the pilot, wondering why the township was, the words that I heard were stealing your money, and although I wouldn't put it personally that way, I can understand why people came to that conclusion. And the same forces that were busy at work last time are have been busy at work again. This article is so full of distortions, and I just want to focus on one of them. And that is that should you receive a $2,500 and change rebate on the pilot? First of all, the reason for a $16.1 million referendum is because last year, the state legislature passed a measure that actually allowed townships like Hopewell Township to bond in support of you, because otherwise, you know, the township committee might decide, I can't imagine it, that they want to support you for a year, but they can't commit the next township committee and the one after that. But through a bond, they can, they can actually do that and commit future township committees to provide that support. There's no way to do this that way. More importantly, what this does is this actually takes $2,500 in revenue coming from new residents and giving it to old residents, which is just about as unfair and immoral as anything that I can imagine, and just, and worse than anything that we've witnessed thus far. You need to get out in front of this, obviously, but you shouldn't have any trouble, it seems to me, because this is just, this is, what's the word I'm looking for, trash. And it's sad because these are former mayors. I'm a former mayor and I feel an obligation when I get up here to speak truth and not to distort the record. Finally, one last thought, and that is to Dr. Treese, but to really all the members of the board, you're completely correct, you take what you can get, but the reality is that that $16.1 million offer is pennies on the dollar. It really is a ridiculously small amount. I don't know what happens if Pennington Borough and the boroughs actually prevail in that lawsuit, and I hope they do. It's hard for me to say that as a former mayor that I'm rooting for the boroughs to succeed in a lawsuit against the township, but it actually speaks volumes about where we are as a community, as a crisis that we've got borough suing the township. That was unheard of in my day, and now it's perhaps even necessary. I do think that that suit will prevail, and you should give some consideration to what the impact will be on the district if it does. As far as the $16.1 million, my last thought, please urge the township to give you a more credible offer. The $16.1 million is a pittance compared to the money they're taking in, and here is my last thought. Right now, across the way at a meeting that's at this very time, I wish the meetings were not at the same time, they're giving themselves a doubling in their salary. I don't know if anybody here is aware of that. Their mayor is going from 6,000 to 14,000, and that is, that money is coming from, that money is coming from pilot revenue. Thank you.
Sylvia Cosus, Seven Wydell Drive in Pennington, and thank you for clarifying the difference between public comment and speaking as in a personal capacity. I assumed the both meant the same. I'm here on another issue tonight. It's competitive athletics. We've heard about athletics in schools in California. A male-bodied student athlete won the state gold medal in the girls' triple jump and high jump, and a male-bodied pitcher used his genetic advantage to help the Minnesota girls softball team with their state championship. Girls in states across the country are being forced to make a choice. Compete against male athletes in girls-only events or walk away from a sport that they've trained for their whole life. This is happening with the full endorsement of this Board of Ed, our state athletic officials, and Governor Murphy. Objections to male-bodied athletes participating in female competitive sports are not rooted in any malice against a student who experiences gender dysphoria, but on the principle that favoritism towards gender ideology should not prece- precedence over the reality of biology, fairness, safety, a law that women fought for in Title IX. Female Olympic medalist Sharon Davies said that inclusion of males in women's sports has meant invasion, injustice, and ultimately exclusion from our own category. It's a long-established principle in fair, and that fair and meaningful competition is achieved by grouping athletes into different categories based on age, disability, sometimes weight. 18-year-olds can't compete in the 12 and under league, and heavyweight boxers can't fight featherweights. These divisions protect competition, safety, equal opportunities, and fairness. The same principle should apply to the sexes. Keeping men out of women's sports is not anti-trans, but it's pro-woman and it's pro-truth. Should a male-bodied New Jersey student athlete potentially become the women's state champion in the triple jump or the 100-meter butterfly? There is an executive order to protect opportunities for women and girls to compete in fair and safe sports. Our district has complied with executive orders in the past. Governor Murphy again, had eight with COVID-19. Many parents request that the board revise policy 5756 to read. Transgender students shall be permitted to participate in competitive athletic activities in a manner consistent with their biological sex. Will the board revise policy 5756 to reflect that biological males cannot participate in women's competitive sports? Thank you.
Meowback is Hopewell Borough. So obviously, I go to Hopewell, but I actually go to Hopewell half-day because I'm at Mercer County Technical School in the morning in the building construction program. And while I do have some, some things to say about kind of the way that the relationship between Hopewell and Mercer County Technical School runs, my main point of me speaking right now is kind of, that's just a preference for that. The reason why that's relevant is because I can only take four classes at Hopewell each year as opposed to eight because I'm only there half-day. And so, meeting all of the graduation requirements is a challenge, and it's a challenge for me, it's a challenge for every student who, whether they go to Mercer County Technical School or they're completing college programs for half the day, only have a limited amount of class slots. My point for this regards AP Statistics, and according to, I'm on NJ.gov right now, their state requirements for mathematics, Algebra I or the content equivalent, geometry or the content equivalent, and third year of math that builds upon the concepts and skills of algebra and geometry and prepares students for college and 21st century careers. Because AP, because Algebra II is a prerequisite for AP Statistics, to my knowledge, AP Statistics meets that third box for the, that third set of five credits for math. However, AP Statistics does, is categorized as an elective math at Hopewell, and so therefore, while meeting the state's graduation requirements, it does not meet Hopewell's graduation requirements. This policy limits all students in, minimally, but a student like me and particularly where I'm already trying to manage different, manage challenges of essentially graduating in three years, getting rid of eight total classes over the course of my two years here, or four years here. And I tried working with Mr. Wolfing, the head of the math department here, to fix that, and that didn't go anywhere, and I was just curious if that, if that is something that can be looked at. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Logan. I want to thank John earlier for bringing up one of the points of.
Can you just remind me of your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Matt Holner. Old Washington Crossing Road. I want to thank John for bringing up the newspaper article, right? I definitely don't have the education wherewithal to understand really the, the fight really going on with pilot and where I should be talking about that, like township committee here, other places. That's why I just wanted to make sure to, I don't know if it's really a question, but it's more just like, there's definitely confusion going on of like, what is within realm of, and it's bleeding into school district issues, where an article like that goes out, you know, it's classic, you can write whatever you want and anywhere really, but it's like, how much of that is true? I don't know how much of that, and so you're really within a weird stranglehold or argument between someone that's upset about how pilot funds are being used or what it's being used for, the political side of that or not of, you know, developments in town, and then how much of that really is directly impacted by a vote here for, for money. So just one of the things around education and what I think, just want to make sure is there as we move into the vote is like, not everyone understands that or is going to go out of their way to understand pilot. I could probably spend years of figuring that out, and I still won't know how that impacts that $16.1 or not. But I think at the end of the day, most voters, it really comes down to driving down the street and seeing a guy holding a bag of money over his shoulder. I think that's what the design was last year. But it's really coming down to like, how to really baseline that to the minimalist level of possible explanation of like, what actually is happening here for a vote? How much of that really is that question two now if we're splitting it? And really what the, like what the impact is for people voting, you know, school district or not, right? Like the residents outside school district, or outside school district, but without kids, like how to get them, like you said earlier, I really think there's just that battle of voter that's like, I don't know really what I'm voting on. And that's probably my ignorance as well, but like, you see different things in newspapers, which who knows who reads those anymore, but you know, you see that story and you're like, I don't know if that's even legally possible, but it's, it's there, right? So no one's really, there's not, like, it's quickly, you know, I don't have any social media presence, but like, there's no one fighting back instantly, I'm not in the supermarket, and someone's like, that's complete BS or not, right? But I just want to make sure, like, that's, my question really is making sure, like, our comment is, we need to kind of get it, I think it makes sense to get ahead of that for the average person who's just going to show up one day and vote. I'll leave it at that with the yellow sign, so thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Kavanaugh, and again, I'm a resident of Hopewell Township. Before the board considers to change its policy on trans athletes, I would encourage you all to listen to a September 23, September 2023 episode of a podcast that I find dear, Pablo Torri finds out. In that episode, Pablo interviewed the single, single trans feminine athlete in the state of Ohio that the- in the state of Ohio, that the state of Ohio was bringing its full legislative weight upon her. She was the backup catcher, if my memory serves, on the junior varsity squad. I also remind the Board the outrage that happened at the 2024 Olympics as differing reports came out about a female boxer and the outrage that was generated then. I would ask the Board to be gentle, to think carefully about the individuals, especially as the Supreme Court has just filed, has just... I can't, words, failing me, has just responded. That's not the right word, but I can't find it. In two recent cases, that the needs of the individual need to be focused on rather than groups identified and just carried against. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do like to...
The first question, and if I could ask Ms. Mott to clarify, because I wasn't sure what she meant by the, the bus, who's allowed to ride, qualifications to drive a bus or ride a bus? Rider, so all of our... Oh, so, so if, right, so if we have buses that can run our kids here, it's cheaper for us to run our own buses, we do that. But in some cases, we have the van going, this, you know, group going, that group going. And so, it's just, you know, that, the van probably got ahead and got the buses we had here first. And those are, you know, just what we have to pay the salaries of the bus drivers versus the sports that come later, whether or not you got into a competition that adds things. So that, that's how we decide.
Typically, it's during the week. During the week, we use contracted buses. On the weekends, we use our own buses.
Yes. So that helps, yeah, thank you. So it's availability there. We talked about the Special Olympics. We do have the unified track here, that, and we will keep that in mind for special education. I mean, the Special Olympics, my former district, we had a Special Olympics, we didn't have unified. So, you know, as we find more money, hopefully, that's something we can consider. I think both of them, there's a place for both of them. I would love to add that, so we will keep that as a wish list thing for the district. I appreciate your support, Mr. Edwards. I know you always give us your support, and you're fighting the good fight with the township. And this will kind of marry with that other question about, you know, pilots. The long and the short of it, and the quick answer is, we have no control over who decides to have a pilot, and we have no control over whether or not they negotiate giving us a percentage of their profits or giving us the $16.1 or like, for Princeton, 18 or whatever they got there. It's really up to the municipality, and we have no say in that. So the questions I'm putting up are things that I have to do for the district. This is what we need for the district, whether they give us a dime or not. Will I keep fighting and negotiating and asking for more? Absolutely. Am I satisfied with only getting $16.1 or anyone up here? No. So we're continuing to fight. Right now, that's the promise we have on the table right now, but we continue to meet with folks, and we continue to ask for more, and we'll see what happens. Now, with the lawsuit, what they're trying to accomplish, one is already dropped out, so it's just Pennington Borough now, is that commitment for a percentage of the, the pilot monies going, going back? You want to add anything, Mr., Dr. Resnick?
Well, on that one, because I wanted to respond to other things, but on that one, yeah, I mean, and the reality is even the $16.1, it's a very conditional promise at this point. So unfortunately, we don't even know if we're going to get that money. That's, or if we're going to get it in time for us to be able to build stuff. I remain very hopeful, but yeah, I don't have anything else to add there.
Well, I, I will comment, just to underscore, when Dr. Treese says we will continue to negotiate, what that means is we continue to call the meetings, we continue to ask for the funds, we continue to ask for their further commitment. We, in fact, asked before our deadline of, you know, submitting the questions. We will continue to meet and ask and meet and ask, and we'll get what we get, right? So I just want to clarify what asking, what, when we say we continue to negotiate, we have not relented since this all started. The second thing I'll say is you were at the meeting where Dr. Treese and I both spoke. We said, that's a good start. We got a lot of heat from our other comments, but you know that we've been very clear about our expectations and not putting those school districts in the middle.
We, I should say, we also continue to remind the municipal leaders of a fact that somehow in their, I want to say, discussions of the issue, they sometimes seem to forget, people move here for schools. They buy property here for schools. So while they're discussing these issues, which, there's tons of opinions on them, we just try to continue to remind them to not forget about the fact that people move here for schools. How effective that is, I don't know. It would certainly be much more effective. The more people continue to remind everybody across all the municipalities that our property values and the reason this area is attractive to people is because of schools to a very significant extent, not only, but to an extremely significant extent. I think the better off we're going to be, that's really our biggest leverage. Beyond that, we're stuck.
Yes, there was a question about AP Stats. Dr. Plitzis?
So when the state gives us regulations, like there's three years of math, and they might stipulate what the math is, and then it's a little ambiguous with the third, as the, as the student mentioned, that is when the district decides what they are going to count as the third year. I mean, it's very similar for science, too. So that is why AP Stats is considered an elective, not a required course, because we as a district have agreed that Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II are the three required years of math that we as a district condone, unless students have obviously completed those prerequisites.
And I would recommend that you definitely take at least two of those before you take AP Stats, or you're not going to be a happy camper, because you are going to need those, those preliminary. Geometry, maybe you can get away with not having, but you absolutely have to have Algebra I and II to be successful. It is a college-level course, but that, it is a district decision that happened way before Dr. Plitzis and I got here, but you do need that progression before you can take AP Stat.
Just regarding the comments around understanding the pilot and the comments in the paper, I, I think it's important that we collectively are taking a very different approach this season around being proactive with communication. We have the challenge of having a monthly publication in the Hopewell Express, but we will, you will see more from us, more broadly, individuals from the community that are supporting the, the referendum. You will see that in the Hopewell Express as well as Mercer Me. So we, regarding specifically the paper, shortly thereafter, Dr. Resnick published something as a private citizen, and the interest will be to try to get that in the Hopewell Express as well. Dr. Treese and I also have a letter that will be going out shortly, and our finance committee is scheduled to pull something together. So we are, we are always proactively trying to get ahead of the communication. And quite frankly, I'll say this openly. My commitment for us as a communicating body around the referendum is not to go tit-for-tat, because that is absolutely useless, but to help people understand that their thinking is outdated. They're using old education standards, our structures for teaching, special ed. All of our programming looks entirely different. The state requirements are different. So their thinking is outdated. What we can do, instead of understanding that, encourage your folks, again, anybody you know who's conflicted, trying to understand that information, is to send them back to the school district. If they don't see something on the school district website that answers their question, email. If they can't get to this forum, then, you know, request that they, they email. But it's outdated. It's not aligned with the way we educate now, so none of those numbers make a difference, and they're using apples and oranges as comparisons. But I will say, in terms of that document and some of the arguments that stand out to people are addressed by Dr. Resnick's message in Mercer, the latest Mercer Me. So go back and look at that. And then, as it relates to pilots in general, it is complicated. So please do not feel like you are just rolling around a ball yarn. It is, is a lot of language that's unique to education finance. And, you know, I would encourage you honestly to participate in Dr. Treese's committee, because your questions will help us simplify our message to other folks who are just struggling to understand what it's all about. So I appreciate you immensely for standing up and asking your questions. You're not the only one that is challenged to understand finance, school board finance and education finance, especially in New Jersey as a state. So please, please continue to participate, continue to ask questions. But as it relates to that, that paper, what I can say is, it's outdated. None of the numbers are relevant. If you want to understand any of it, go to the Mercer Me article from, I think it was two weeks ago, Dr. Resnick? Week and a half ago, and ultimately go to our referendum page on the school board's website.
And also Seth wrote also a very good actual article as opposed to an opinion piece. In the same, I think, in the same issue of Mercer Me.
Any other comments from the finance committee and/or?
I've got, so, so picking up on the subject of Mercer Me, not that we want to promote you, Seth, but it does come out multiple times a week as opposed to once a month. So I think it's a, and, and, and on that article, I think, I didn't address the 2,500, because honestly, as a Pennington resident, I wouldn't be getting it anyway. But there were some other numbers that were listed there, which are accurate, but are, as things can be with summary numbers, can be interpreted in ways which I didn't want them to be interpreted in, so I gave some additional numbers and some breakdowns. And certainly, if you're interested, please go look at the breakdowns. Ms. M, I wanted to address your comment, the problem with analogies, people, analogies can do as much wrong as they do good, but I'll say this on your point on the second question. And I can only speak for myself, yes, it is a concern. I've said, I think in a number of meetings, that folks in the Stony Brook area and Hopewell Elementary shouldn't look at this and go, oh, well, that's not our issue, because we will not have inequity in class sizes between the four elementarys. So their class sizes will go up as well, right? It'll be a district-wide impact, but I appreciate that that can get lost. I think for me, in my mind, you know, why I prefer the two-question structure. I really, question one is computer hardware simply not working. Question two is whether we have enough hardware. Well, if we don't have enough, we can still kind of run the software. If it doesn't work, then the software doesn't run. So I want to make sure that whatever we have, at least it runs. Right, and, and that's why, at the end of the day, I am personally in favor of the structure that we're talking about now.
They're all very important to me, so you know how I feel about it, but I'm going to go with the, what the Board asked me to do. And so on the final question, and it kind of touches on, on two comments that were made. We did just recently revise Policy 5756 in alignment with the New Jersey Department of Education's requirement, which is who we're beholden to. So I have to comply with that, the Board has to comply with that, and the revisions that they required of the equity plan is aligned with that. And is what's best for kids. Now, the, the New Jersey Scholastic Association has mechanisms in place so that if, if Ms. Liliston and somebody that looks like Mr. Resnick shows up to compete, they make the decision that that doesn't happen. So we have a mechanism in place for that already that they manage, right? If there's a complaint that there's an imbalance, that they, they address that appropriately. But we are in alignment to what the expectations are for the New Jersey Department of Ed, for having students have access to, to what they are identifying as. And those, those things the association deals with, and to date, we haven't had an issue, I don't think, in the state of New Jersey, so it's been handled. So that's, that's a response to those, those two comments.
Nope. All right. With that, we are going to close public comment, and I need a first and second to move to executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Executive session, we'll, we will be discussing a residency hearing as well as the superintendent evaluation. No actions will be taken.